May 15th.
Wait, what happened?
The on button?
What happened?
I'm sure he'll... Yeah. This is in my head. We're going to call to order the May 15th meeting of the West Sacramento City Council, the successor agency and the financing authority. We're going to begin tonight, as we do each week, with the Pledge of Allegiance. And we'd like to invite our guests to join the pledge, join the council and staff in the pledge, which tonight is going to be led by the police chief, who's celebrating his birthday this evening with us, Tom McDonald.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Happy birthday, chief.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Twenty-nine is good on you.
All right. The council did meet in close session this evening to confer with our real property negotiator regarding the parcels listed in the agenda. Parties to that negotiation are Mark Friedman, Gurjat Ture, Randy Koss and others. And to confer with our labor negotiator regarding negotiations with the confidential miscellaneous management, safety management and specialist and professionals units. No action was taken. So with that, we're going to proceed to item 1A, which is presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the city council. As is noted in our agenda, state law prevents the council from having a discussion or taking action on items that are brought up under item 1A, but it is an important opportunity for a public forum. We ask that anyone wishing to address the council on this or any other item this evening, please fill out one of the yellow cards that's available near the front door and turn that into the city clerk. In front of the clerk is a timer that we use to make sure that everybody gets a chance to be heard, and so we ask that all the testimony be limited to no more than three minutes. Also in front of the clerk is a good old fashioned analog flip chart, and that chart simply indicates which agenda item is currently under consideration, in case it's not clear from the discussion. We recognize that the clerk accepts the cards all the way up to the conclusion of the staff report on a particular agenda item. Once the staff report's done and the council questions or the public testimony have begun, we don't take any additional speaking cards. So if you're here for a specific item, please be sure to try to get the card in before the end of the staff report. And then finally, we do recognize that for some folks, speaking in public is worse than Sacramento allergies and causes hives and other conditions. So we do ask that there not be any boos or cat calls or actually any applause or other demonstrations. We try to maintain a civil discourse among neighbors here in the chambers. So with that, we have one request to speak under item 1A, and that's by Frank Resslin. Welcome.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Frank Resslin. I'm the owner and CEO of Le Five West Sacramento, the indoor soccer facility in West Sacramento. So I just want to do a quick presentation of the facility.
Is your microphone on? Frank, right at the base of the microphone in front of you. No, not that one. Okay, the city clerk will help out. Want to be sure everyone, the millions of viewers at home are able to hear what you've got to say because it's really important.
Okay. So just to repeat, my name is Frank Resslin. I'm the owner and CEO of Le Five West Sacramento. We just opened a new indoor soccer facility on Seaport Boulevard. So our facility is a 65,000 square feet facility with nine indoor soccer fields. There are five-on-five, so small sided soccer fields, plus a small training area. We also have the most important sports bar and a lounge area where we're going to serve food and beverages. And I think in a week or two, we're going to have beer and wine. So you can come hang out with your friends and just have a good time. So our goal with this project is to bring soccer to everybody. We know the lack of infrastructure for youth and adults to play soccer, and that was our vision with this project, is to bring soccer to everybody so we can enjoy the game. So with our unique concept of five-on-five, we promote a very technical game for youth and advanced players that want to keep playing the game and also a great workout for fitness lovers. So we're going to offer pickup games all week long. We're going to also develop our own Le Five training to develop the youth. Like I said, five-on-five is the best way to develop your technical skills if you want to become a great soccer player. We're also going to have our own youth and adult leagues and also tournaments. And finally, we're going to organize events such as birthday parties, corporate events and also non-for-profit events. So I would love to invite you to come see our facility and try it out. We have already two council members who came to see our facility. Thank you very much. And we're very excited to be part of the city of West Sacramento and bring this facility to the community. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Bienvenue to West Sacramento. Can you tell us which one of the council members won?
Chris.
Which one won the match? If it's a foul, I did not win.
Actually, make that three. I was there last night with my nine-year-old who was doing, who was playing.
Yeah, I saw Alex and he told me that you were here. Thank you very much for coming.
It's fantastic facility.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Yeah, this, I have to say, this is when I came on the city council in 1996, a friend and a bunch of local indoor soccer players were, they were excited because they thought, now that you're on the city council, you can make an indoor soccer facility in the city. I said, yes, I promise I will do that. And here we are 20, 19 years later, doing it. And it takes an outfit of the kind of capacity and skill and experience that Le Five has. And we're just really, really pleased that you've, that you've come to town and certainly encourage everyone in the, in the community and in the region to come give it a try.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. With that, then we're moving to item 1B, which is council reports, communications. Council member Guerrero?
Yes. Last week, I participated in the cap-to-cap in Washington DC to address our cities, one of our cities' priorities. With council member Sandin, Greg Faben, our flood protection manager, and our department Tom Ramos and I, along with the delegation of regional SAFCA members, met with the US Army Corps to discuss our interest for additional funding needed for ongoing levy improvements. We continued with meetings over the few days with Congresswoman Doris Mitsui, Senate Appropriations Committee, the Natural Water Race Conference, Senator Dianne Feinstein's consultants, to articulate the needs prioritized in infrastructure improvements, specifically for West SAC to execute design agreement and initiative design activities for fiscal year 2019 and secure a new start in fiscal year 2020 work plan funding with new federal funding and maximizing non-federal funding sources. We felt it was, you know, a pretty good trip with a lot of preparation and work to get our delegation to articulate the importance of funding priorities, and we'll continue to work on this issue at the federal level. It was also a pleasure to work our muscles, along with my fellow city council members, with Habitat for Humanity to build place structures that are Discovery Preschool. I thank council member Sandin and Orozco for organizing this effort, and my fellow council members and school board members for their involvement, demonstrating women can build structures for a healthy West Sacramento for our young learners.
All right. Thank you. Other reports? Council member Sandin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Earlier today, the Yellow Solano Air Quality Management District Board of Directors met. We adopted the 2019 triennial assessment and plan update that focuses on attainment of the state ozone standard. We adopted amendments to Rule 3.25 related to particulate matter so that the Environmental Protection Agency would approve the rule. And this relates to using the best available control technology that is the lowest achievable emission rate. And then we amended two rules related to boilers to provide some flexibility and simplification. So that was this morning. And then, as council member Guerrero mentioned, I think all of us were back in DC at the cap-to-cap program. And in addition to advocating for flood protection, I also had an opportunity to advocate for some funding for our permanent supportive housing project as well. And then I also participated in the Lake Washington cleanup celebration along with Port Chair Oscar Villegas last Friday. And then, as council member Guerrero mentioned, had the Habitat for Humanity Women Build program as well. It was a great, great day. I'm still getting over my muscles from that, but it was, it was wonderful.
Council member Ledesma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too was at cap-to-cap last, was that last week?
Yeah.
That was last week. Thank you. And took part with the Transportation Committee, which advocated a couple of priority, priorities, lobbied our local delegation throughout the week. Some really good discussions articulating the need for infrastructure financing as well as continued funding some of our core projects in West Sacramento. The leaflet we had included not only the work we're doing on the streetcar, but also the bridge, advocating for the bridges that we have planned at the I Street Bridge replacement and the Broadway Bridge and a few other areas. The place that I found most interesting was the, was the work we did and a couple of meetings, one in particular with the air quality. And I'm trying to remember, the other one was in the room with us, but it escapes me at the moment. But some really good discussion, the Nexus for Air Quality Transportation and a couple of other groups with Senator Kamala Harris's office, talking about the need, all those, the confluence of all the needs around increased mobility. We cited all the work we're doing with VIA as well as the work we're doing on jump bikes as a real need for us to continue that work for climate change, for air quality, as well as to find options for our residents. And I think that was a real benefit of being a part of that transportation committee is to get the holistic view of how where West SAC is working on that front. And so it was really a pleasure to work with members of other jurisdictions around the region advocating for regional solutions. So thanks to all my colleagues for, it was a pleasure spending time with you as well in Washington. This past Saturday, I represented all of you in kicking off the Sac Town Urban Dash at the barn, which was sponsored by the International 2030 Club. I don't know why they invited me. I'm neither 20 nor 30, nor do I run. But they had me there anyway, maybe because it was at the barn. But it was an opportunity to welcome just over 100 runners. I recognized a lot of local West Sacramento residents who took part in the 5K. It's a great event, and then Saturday morning helped start them. But it was the benefit, the Running for Ret charity, and it was really successful. And the organizers had a really good turnout and really were pleased, and hopefully they'll be coming back to bring the Sac Town Urban Dash back to West SAC. So that was a real pleasure to be a part of. Then this last Monday was the meeting of the Yellow County Transportation District. A couple of things of note. First of all, we had a really good presentation by staff on the microtransit solution that they are, that we are building and getting ready to implement in Knights Landing. This is significant, I think, because the district is learning to turn to the SKID, that is, having mobility options that are most prevalent and affecting the district. And we found a way, a solution through our contractor TransDev, to come up with a really unique opportunity through a grant from SECOG to be able to try to, to offer a microtransit solution for rural area that hasn't traditionally received regular transit district from our regular fixed route service. So there's extensive outreach to that community in terms of what the community needs. So the staff brought to us a framework of what that would look like. But again, it's a really good opportunity for the transit to dip their toe into an area that we've seen much success from. One of the areas that they were really trying to learn from us was around, they don't have the budget that we had to kind of implement such a solution, nor did they have a real good feel for what that community is really going to need. So it's going to be really flexible, and I think the board, the rest of the board members quickly identified that we're going to have to be really flexible, whether the timeframes will work and, and how the service would be adopted. So again, it was a really good, really good to get an update from them on how the district is learning to kind of get into the mobility game in that way. So I felt really good about that. The other item of note, let's back to this group, was around the preliminary budget was presented to us for the 1920 year. And the, the most important thing to kind of keep in mind is overall, the budget for fixed rate and peritransit operating planning capital project, project is up 28% year-over-year. A lot of that is due to the replacement of the large buses being used on the capital side. The capital increases were up $5 million. Because of this, these are compressed natural gas buses that are new zero, which is good. But it is a capital cost and kind of underscores some of our concerns over the last few meetings when we talked about as a, as a council, kind of the challenge we have with the district and its current infrastructure, because it is expensive to maintain. And then the regular operating planning of a regular fixed line route's up just, just over 1%. So they, again, they're able to, the overall budget for us increased, a lot of the number I lost it, I'm sorry, but there is an increase from us from 20, I'm sorry, just over $2 million to, I think, 2.2 million. I think staff will give you a nod if that's about right overall. And so again, it's, it's an increase to us. It's the preliminary budget. We had, I want to thank the staff who sent to the district a very thorough review, a two-page letter, which outlined some requests to look at service, service areas where we had traditionally underperforming routes. And the ridership numbers for the last few years in the district has, has been steadily declining. And so is ridership on some of these routes that we have been knowing about. So staff had asked, and based on our direction, to start looking at areas where they might be able to streamline to correct some routes, if it could, cut some routes. Also going on at the district is a major operational review, comprehensive operational review, that's looking at all the lines in Yellow County. And what the board has decided to do, in addition to West SAC asking for changes, Woodland asked for changes to its routing because of similar issues. They have a little bit different need in Woodland, obviously trying to get to Sacramento is a major imperative of theirs. And Davis had some, also had some challenges in terms of asks around it. So the policy question at the board level was, how does a district take those city recommendations when we're trying to operate as one district, facilitating one budget? How's it take those? And what we decided to do is, we're going to pass those on to the contractor that's doing the operational review. This is a comprehensive look at all the routes and where the patterns are, where the ridership is, and start to overlay those with where we, where we have perceived or seen changes or where there's opportunities. And we're asking in June meeting to have a preliminary look at what those operational reviews are and hopefully be able to start making either some decisions or giving them direction on where this is going. This is going to be a little bit of a process and one that we're going to have to be diligent on. I've encouraged staff at the, staff at the district to make sure they're in communication with our staff. And then Denix and team met with the Transportation District just about a week before that, I want to say the week before the meeting, to kind of outline some areas and concerns, some areas of possible routes that they can go to. And that was memorialized in a letter. So thanks, staff, for all your diligence on this. We still have some more work to do, and we have another budget meeting coming up in June. It's kind of critical. But I also want to take note that there will be times when we get the budget set that we can make adjustments. That was one of the key questions we asked. We can make adjustments as we learn. We don't think the operational review's going to be ready before September, October timeframe. We're trying to push that up. But again, those are the kind of things we're depending on to work with the rest of the district, to make sure if we can get some recommended changes made and it, and we get some learning thrown in via system to see that those things can, now the two systems can coexist and be successful, that would be the outcome we're looking for. So that was the extent of it. It was a workshop, but they got some direction, and we'll come back in June to adopt that budget. So that's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Mayor Potem Orozco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. While I stayed, I also attended cap-to-cap, but stayed an extra day while my coworkers were off to DC. On May 3rd, had the opportunity to represent the city at our senior resource fair. I tell you, there is no feeling like the one you get when a group of seniors that are filling the community center roar an approval when you tell them that VIA is being extended past its pilot stage. The resource fair was a tremendous success. Thanks very much to our Parks and Rec staff and Tracy Michael, who was there facilitating a lot of the activities and many of the staff that have been on board year after year. It was a fantastic turnout. And again, there were so many people relaying stories of their approval of the direction our city is, is heading and, and all of the options that connect us to one another, far past the, the stories of Robin and ice cream or people getting together to finally share a lunch period together, but rather people who are really honestly using VIA for their dressing grandchildren and to go to doctor's appointments and to actually just get around the city. So that's just fantastic to hear. That evening, I also, Tracy Michael went over to Bright Park, where we activated the park in a different way. As many of you recall, four years ago, we all rolled up our sleeves as a community and we built the Disney Kaboom Park, which is the largest Disney build in partnership with Kaboom in the nation. And it's right here in West Sacramento. We bought Disney back and did a May 3rd Star Wars night where we showed Return of the Jedi in a tremendous screen. And at first, I wasn't sure, you know, whether or not the community was going to come out. And right before we screened the movie, there was a huge group that had populated the grass. People were playing on the playground, but also coming out in droves. We handed out lightsabers and lots of treats and stuff for the kids in the community. And I think that it was just a dream come true to see that park activated in the way it was. Went to cap-to-cap and supported, represented our city in the civic amenities and public safety teams. That was, I think we covered a lot of ground as a council with all the different teams that we supported. In addition, I know it's been mentioned, but I wanted to underscore the significance of some of the community things that have been going on, specifically mentioned by council members Guerrero and Sandin about the women's build. Brad Sandin and I have been working on the women's build for about three years now in Sacramento and had been kind of tugging on Habitat for Humanity to consider a project in West Sacramento, because there's a lot of need here. And, you know, we don't have, you know, infinite resources to address all those needs. But it was really exciting to me to actually stand shoulder to shoulder with a lot of women elected officials and women leaders in our community. Two of the three women school board members, trustees were there to work, Sarah Kirby Gonzalez and Jackie Wong. And then also all three of the women on the city council helped beautify Discovery Preschool and portions of Samcom's Park, and will continue this weekend as well. But we're bringing it to West Sacramento. And one of the questions was, what's next? And I'm really hopeful that we can continue that partnership for our great city and see a nice uplift to the complexion. And then I also wanted to end with downtown streets team update. I periodically give these, and I won't go through every single week, but I will say that in the month of April, the downtown streets teams removed about 12,480 gallons of debris from our streets, including 47 sharps, which are hydrodynamic needles from the grounds. And they have to be specifically trained to pick up those sharps so that way they don't, you know, obviously, there's not an impediment to their health. But a very valuable resource and a lot of great feedback from our community. I wanted to share an anecdote, a story from one of our DST members, a story of Ryan, aka Skits. Mark Sawyer, our homeless coordinator, referred Skits to the team in October 2018, and Skits works and has worked diligently to improve her attendance on the team and began engaging in case management in January. She participated in the spring into employment events in April. And after 22 years of unemployment, Skits was hired full-time at Walmart this past Monday. Skits is getting assistance in her transition to full-time employment and stable housing is soon to follow. And in her words, Skits says, "I hope you know I could have never done it without the DST program and all it has done for me. Thank you for this program and giving me back something I have not had in a long time, my confidence in myself." So thank you to West Sacramento for that fantastic pilot program.
All right. Thank you. I was at, I did, did the cap-to-cap trip as well. I think we were, we were one of the best represented cities in the region on that trip, which isn't unusual just because of the particularly intense relationship that West Sacramento has with the federal government, with between being fully surrounded by levies, operating the region's only port, and being the hub of much of the region's transportation system, and having a lot of pending transportation projects, both transit and, and bridges. We've, we've almost always had a significant presence in Washington as a result. So I participated on the transportation team and also in the leadership meetings with the, the speaker's office in the House and in OMB as well. But the reports have all been made about the key issues and progress that we made in those, in those arenas. Yesterday morning, the Chamber of Commerce had a forum with LAFCO and us on the, the proposal to transfer governance responsibility for the, to create a subsidiary, subsidiary district out of the reclamation districts within the community's boundaries. A good, good forum, a lot of good questions, and I think a lot of good learning from the, from the chamber as we continue to move forward and move into the final stages of that consolidation process. And then we also held the periodic meeting of the mayor's selection committee. This is the statutory body that is consists of the mayors of the four cities and the county. And we make appointments to various things that are needed on behalf of the cities as a group. And it is our turn to serve as the representatives of Davis, Woodland, West Sacramento and Winters on the Remote Access Network Board. And that board is responsible for the coordination and the prioritization of the Remote Access System, which is really specifically related to the fingerprinting system and identification system. So it looks at crime rates and criminal offenses and to determine where and how to support the network facilities. Our chief of police is, is a senior member of that, of that board as well, but it is our turn to serve on it as well. So I, so it was required by the, by state law that one of the mayors be selected in that. So it is, it is our, my turn, but the designate for that board's going to be council member Guerrero. And the mayors of all three, of three, all three other cities have concurred in that as well. So that action was taken yesterday. So that's it on the reports. We have no appointments to boards and commissions this evening, so we're going to proceed to presentations. We have just one this evening, which is presentation, item two, presentation of proclamation declaring May 2019 as Mental Health Awareness Month. Is there a motion on the proclamation?
It's moved. Second?
It's been moved by council member Sandin and seconded by council member Guerrero. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. And we're going to present the proclamation to Karen Larson and Maria Seamus. Yes. Yes. Why don't you join me over here? Our audiovisual system is not working. Power outage earlier today. But this is a... Why don't you join me over here? Our audiovisual system is not working. Power outage earlier today, but this is, we do it on this side so that the public gets the best view of the folks that we are honoring. So this is a proclamation of the city council recognizing May 2019 as Mental Health Awareness Month and I'm going to read a couple of provisions of the proclamation and I want to also invite you to make a couple of remarks if you wish. Whereas an estimated 5% of the population have a serious mental illness, and that's approximately 11,000 people in Yolo County who struggle with serious mental illness. And whereas in California, suicide is the second leading cause of death for ages 25 to 34 and a third leading cause of death for youth ages 10 to 24. And whereas in April 2018, the Yellow County Health and Human Services Agency, in partnership with Sutter Health, opened the First Responders Mental Health Urgent Care in West Sacramento for residents suffering mental health crisis. The Jefferson Boulevard facility operates nights and weekends, filling a much-needed gap in off-hours crisis intervention. And whereas Yellow County Health and Human Services, West Sacramento outpatient specialty mental health services were utilized by 307 individuals during the last half of 2018, including 284 adults and 23 youth under the age of 17. And whereas a number of agencies and community organizations are now collaborating in their efforts to address mental health concerns, including the Yellow County Mental Health Board, including our local representative on the board, and Yellow County Health and Human Services Agency, Wellness Centers in West Sacramento, Woodland, and Davis. And whereas Mental Health Awareness Month is supported by the year-long efforts of the National Alliance on Mental Illness, Yolo Chapter to raise awareness of mental health issues and its services. And whereas providing community-based mental health services can strengthen families and educate the citizens of West Sacramento and Yolo County about treatments and programs available, as well as assisting to reduce the stigma associated with mental illness. Now therefore be proclaimed that the city council of the city of West Sacramento does hereby recognize the month of May 2019 as Mental Health Awareness Month. Thank you. Community achievements, which are extraordinary in the arc of history in this community, and I know it's, we're not alone, but certainly in this city, mental health has been something that someone else works on and no one talks about. And in the last several years, through the leadership of all three of you and many others in the community and various agencies and in City Hall and in the community, that is changing. And it's about time and the council has identified, for the first time ever in the last two years, the council has highlighted mental health and mental health awareness of services, connection to services, integration with other services and programs as one of its key strategic priorities, becoming one of the few city councils in the region that has taken, put that front and center as one of its key responsibilities. And so your work at both matters, but it's also making a difference and we salute and thank you for your leadership in that space and want to invite you to make a comment or two. And I also want to note, in case she doesn't say anything, Councilmember Martha Guerrero, who is a former member of the local mental health board as well, and really extraordinary leadership of also of her seatmates, Councilmember Ledesma, who've really helped to lead the way here in our own city.
Thank you very much. So it's an honor to be here and to be accepting this resolution. If I were to ask people in the audience and on the dais to stand up if they had someone they loved that had mental health issues or substance abuse issues or had struggled with those issues themselves, I suspect the majority of the people in the room would stand up. I won't do that because there is stigma around these issues and people don't like to stand up in public and own them. But I will say this is a huge part in reducing stigma and associated with mental health and other behavioral health issues. And this is the first time in my 20 years, I think, in Yolo County that the city council has done this. So it's really so touching and such an honor to be here and to receive this and I just want to thank you for calling it out and bringing attention to this. And so great to have my two partners here from the local mental health board. James Glick Hernandez is our president of our board for the local mental health board and Maria, although new, is a great contributor to our local mental health board. We're just really glad to have this opportunity and to have these two wonderful humans by my side, so thank you.
I'd just also like to add that Sally Monderhand, who couldn't be here tonight, is also representing West Sacramento on the local mental health board. She has been for a while, very passionate and I am very appreciative of all the work that the local mental health board has done to reduce stigma, increase access to mental health treatment, develop partnerships with our first responders, an area that, you know, we worked really hard and with Karen has done incredible work in making sure that we have a stronger and, you know, better mental health, mental health and substance abuse treatment system and will continue to grow. We have a long way to go. Thank you. Thank you for all you do.
Councilmember Ledesma. Do you want to go first?
I was just going to thank folks for being here and just let people know that we're having in the Galleria on Friday, a mental health, an art exhibit here in the Galleria. So just if folks are around and want to be, attend that, that would be wonderful.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks Karen and everybody else for being here and supporting this proclamation, receiving it and bringing recognition of this important topic to our community. And thanks to Councilmember Guerrero as well for her leadership in this for the past few years as part of the board. And there's lots of other people in the community. I respect your, you know, that your term about people could stand up and they would do it and you're probably right. And I think that's one of the things that we're getting more comfortable with as a community. And I know it starts from, I appreciate your comments that we were the first maybe to do that, but this shouldn't be the last time we do it either. There's lots of people in our community who work on this every day, who try to bring attention to this, either through the great work that you do at the county and the mental health board, but providers, I'd invited a few to come here today that I know of in the community, but they're out there on the front lines every day, working with kids and adults and everyone else struggling to, with their own mental health issues. And I want to thank them publicly because they're the quiet warriors behind the scenes who are doing the work and helping people get through their issues. And that's an important part of it, is to recognize that. And I know there's people in the private sector, friend over at Mulvaney's, Patrick Mulvaney has started a really great program in restaurant business on how to identify mental health signs in their workplace. It's little things like that as this community that will really start to bring this issue more forward, that gets them the right help at the right time, police force to get them to be able to be trained on how to deal with this in our community. So it is on our list of strategic priorities for a reason. It's to remind us that this is a silent part of our community, that we need to bring more out of the shadows, people to be able to deal with it and know they have friends that have us recognize signs that we can help them with. And I think that's an important part of this. So if you're listening, I'm not sure if the audiovisual is working, get in the home tonight, but look into the signs of how to identify signs of a friend, of a family member, of a coworker. It's important work and that's what this month is all about. So thanks, Mr. Mayor, for the proclamation.
Yeah, I just wanted to, just one other thing, because there's somebody in the audience. And a few weeks ago, without going into any details, a few weeks ago, I had a moment to have a national platform and to say some things about my community. And I talked about, you know, the young woman who struggles with mental health and is overcoming the challenges and yet, you know, still is in the shadows. And someone afterwards said, oh, that was beautiful. I've never, you know, nobody ever talks about the concept of somebody, you know, having those kinds of challenges. That's a real person. This is a real person in my community who, by her, by her own courage and visibility and matter-of-factness and leadership, you know, inspired me and that's a part of every community and all of our circles. And she's here, I'm going to call her up because she's going to, she'll get it, she'll get it, she'll kill me, but I just want to, you know, on behalf of her, but so many others that are in our community who are, you know, who are standing up in ways big and small, loud and quiet, to say thank you because that's what, that's how change happens and we're seeing that payoff. And thank you to that one person that's here tonight too. All right, so with that, we'll bring to the consent agenda, which is items three through nine. Are there any items to remove or any items for subsequent question or comment?
Item eight.
What?
Eight.
Thank you. All right, then item eight is consideration of the data sharing agreement with Washington Unified School District for ongoing operation of the West Sacramento Home Run.
Yes, I have some comments and then some questions about item eight. And I saw that there was a two-by-two meeting and attorneys that put together the agreement for the data sharing agreement. And one of the groups that I, I'm not sure whether or not they participated with the parents, if there was a parent group that participated because it's their children's information that will be shared. So that was either a comment of I wish they were participating and did they actually get involved at any point in time?
I'm not aware that any parents were involved. This was drawn up by the staff at both the school district and the city and the legal staff as well.
Okay. And I wish they would have because this is information that, you know, for a good reason. I'm very supportive of the concept of putting together a study, longitudinal study about the success of the home, you know, West Sacramento. I anticipate it will be successful. Studies have shown it is successful and I'm very supportive of that. Some recommendations I have in looking at the agreement is instead of using the ID info, I don't know what alternatives we can take a look at, instead of using the personal identification of the children's information, can we use some type of ID, like a number to help track the child so that personal information? Or could we have somebody be hired within the school district so that that information remains in the school district and not shared with the city? Just trying to keep it within one location and not get it out from the school. The schools are, you know, they have uses for the information and they do have studies that go on, but if there's a way to do that, that's one suggestion that I have. The other, you know, looking, moving forward, if we didn't do that, is tightening some of the information that is in the purpose and scope of agreement, such as the information on the annual report, just making sure that it's in the aggregate and no personal information, no, like reference to a child, just making sure that we have that referenced in there in that particular, that's on the top of page three, when there's a report. And also adding in the roles and responsibilities of the parties to add an opt-out provision. So if a parent does not want their children's personal information shared, that there's, that they can opt out. And also informing the parent that their information is going to be shared and obviously I think it's going to be everybody's information. So you'll have a group that is participating and a group that's not participating so that, you know, parents are aware. And on the unauthorized disclosures, if there's exposure, it does say on the top of page six, parties, I want to make sure that parents are notified if the information is shared, is, there's some level of disclosure, whether it be a breach of some sort, you know, if somebody, you know, hacks a system or, you know, somebody revealed the information, just making sure that the, you know, parties are there, but I want to make sure parents are notified. And also that there are consequences for the individual that shared the information that's not very specific there. And just a word, under item 3A, teen to 10, I think that means 10.
Right, you're correct. Yeah, we found that error, that'll be corrected.
Okay. Those are just my recommendations.
Okay, so the, just a little, the background, you know, we did draw this up with the school district and the language about, the study was added by the school district for the purposes of, my understanding is that it was to allow them to comply with FERPA. And so, you know, we're very aware of the importance of protecting this data and we're going to take all, you know, I mean, the idea is that this whole thing would be undertaken to protect student data and any information, I mean, you know, this is, it's an important part of this agreement and it's, and the district was very strongly supportive of adding that protective language. So I appreciate your comments. This is, so this has gone to the two-by-two several times as we try to refine it and in part because we just, it just happens to be the case to Mayor Potem Morosco's, you know, great chagrin that both myself and the president of the school board are from the education world and have both negotiated and been in the weeds of, I think between us, close to 60 data sharing agreements within the educational privacy sector. So we've gone over this with a fine-tooth comb. It reflects the state of the art, as it were, which is not only about increasing and increasing and increasing and increasing and restrictions, but also about making sure that data is useful for children and for their families. So most of what's happening here is the, is the use of data for actually providing the services. So the program requires that when you arrive at kindergarten, that a college savings account will be open in your name with $100 in it if you went to a high-quality preschool. Well, that requires a few things. That requires the preschool to have communicated to somebody that you finished a high-quality, that you went to a high-quality preschool. It requires somebody to know then that you're eligible for, that you're entering kindergarten and then it requires somebody to actually then open up the scholarship account, right? So there's a lot of pieces to the puzzle that have to work for that child to get the $100 savings account, that the research shows that for the bulk of the kind of kids that are in our community, will increase the likelihood that they go to college by seven times. So it's an enormous benefit. And so each additional obstacle or form that gets thrown up that reduces the likelihood that that $100 is going to get invested in that account, has the potential of reducing the likelihood of a child going to college by seven times. So you don't, you don't want to add additional forms and requirements without having a very good reason because the consequences of them not, of that last form not getting filled out or the five-year-old does not return it to the school are pretty significant in terms of that. And that's just that one component of the program, but that follows through several elements of it. So trying to find the right balance between making sure that all of the privacy rights are respected and I would note that FERPA, the school privacy law, is probably, I think most of, most of the data attorneys would agree, is actually stronger than, it's tougher than the medical records laws. It's much easier to share medical records than it is to share someone's kindergarten grades, even though, at least for me, I would be much more concerned about either myself or my child's medical records being released than probably a not very consequential set of grades from kindergarten. But that's just the way that that law has, is. So there's already built into that law, which most, most of the policy leaders in Washington and in Sacramento and all the advocates for children have mostly been arguing to loosen that law so that you could provide better services for children and for families. So that has to be, but those have to be balanced against the actual services that we're trying to provide. And so we want to be able to sure, be able to open that savings account. Most of the data that's being involved is anonymized already so that the, it's not as though any of the staff here or council member can go and peer into somebody's fifth grade records or what have you. It's either anonymized, the study data will be anonymized to the extent that we see it and the only other data that has to be moved around is for the purpose, the transactional purposes of opening savings accounts and later on providing scholarships and free college and everything else. So this has gone through all of those pretty exhaustive reviews by all parties and the school board is prepared to approve the same, the same piece. And I do worry about it. We are, I think I mentioned this briefly in the stated city address, but the school district and we and the county and the, and at least one, maybe all three of the federally qualified healthcare centers in the city are working on a pilot project with four other cities in the United States to link up, under the control of, under the control of a parent-driven app, to link up pediatric records with school, with school records, with preschool records. And this is the first time this has been done in the country, but it only, it only works when you agree, when you decide that the fundamental policy is not, is not first privacy, it's first that it's for, it's under the control and for the purpose of the parent when the data is being shared at the individual level. And this agreement accomplishes that. You take this agreement further, then that pilot project becomes at risk and which is, and it's a pilot project that is supported by the pediatricians at the clinics for whom it's a huge benefit if they can, for example, transfer, if a child that goes in for their immunizations, rather than having the pediatrician write up the immunization record and have the child, the child's parent then find a way to get it to the school or to one of our preschools, to simply from that moment hit a button on their phone and have it transferred directly, for the teacher then to be able to transfer back to the pediatrician. I'm not ready to write up yet a full referral, but I'm concerned that record and have the child, the child's parent then find a way to get it to the school or to one of our preschools, to simply from that moment hit a button on their phone and have it transferred directly for the teacher then to be able to transfer back to the pediatrician. I'm not ready to, to write up yet a full referral, but I'm concerned that, that Christopher's struggling in a way that's not, that's not, that's not standard. And so, you know, if there, if the next time Christopher's in, you might want to take a look at his vision. The sort of ongoing communication that can occur between a pediatrician and a, and a teacher is enabled by that system. And so what is, the, the direction that, that this, that these data sharing agreements are going nationally and statewide is really in how to dramatically improve the level of service that is available for particularly low-income families and their children. And this is, this one is really much more of a standard, you know, 2018 version that doesn't do that so much, but it's headed in that, it's trying to leave the door open to that, to that direction while still meeting all of the very, very, very rigorous privacy standards that are both embedded in FERPA and the school district attorney, you know, referenced in this. There's not, there is not one single element that the, that the attorneys for the school district, who I would assure you are just as conservative about school district policies as ours are about municipal policies, there isn't one single thing that they even hinted at that is not in this agreement. So it does reflect the best, the best practice in this space while also allowing to make sure that, that every child gets their savings, their savings account and every child gets the access to the full benefits of the home run.
Mayor Portem Roscoe.
And not to reiterate everything you just said, but, you know, our, our community consistently demands accountability for every dollar spent. And in this case, well, there's a large amount of Measure E funds that is being spent on ensuring that children have access to high-quality educational opportunities that'll allow them to travel from preschool to college. And in order to provide that accountability, certain information, the most conservative information needs to be collected in order to provide useful data, in order to show that these types of programs have made an impact and show that the investment is paying off. And I actually had an opportunity to chair one of the first meetings when trustee or president Jackie Wong was seated in the two-by-two. And I, I recognize that she had expressed some concerns and is fantastically knowledgeable, but also I do want to reiterate the fact that this has been vetted through our attorneys and through the school board and that there has been a consensus that this is only the information that's absolutely necessary in order to provide the savings accounts and to provide scholarship and to actually make right on the home run. But yeah, I, I mean, as an attorney, someone who has to subpoena medical records and/or juvenile records on a regular basis, I do agree that, you know, getting access to other information is a lot easier than getting it from, you know, getting student records. So I'm, I'm pretty confident in the agreement that we have here today and I am, I'm on approval.
Councilmember Gurrell.
Just on the records, I wanted to add a little, a little more on the type of records, like for example, the IDEA, children that are participating in the IDEA, are those records, are those children also included in the, their data also included? My sense is all the children because you have to have a group that's participating and a group that's not participating.
Well, it's all those who qualify. You have to, you have to enter the program by attending a high-quality preschool and then enrolling in district kindergarten. So, but yes, if, if students with a, with a IDEA students would participate too.
Okay.
But the, but the fact that they're IDEA, it's not, that's, that, that.
They won't be identified as IDEA.
That won't be identified as IDEA, right.
And I think that IDEA is, has stronger standards about the data sharing that you can, you know, you, so looking at, at those that have stronger, you know, standards, it's IDEA and HIPAA, you know, unless, unless you have a subpoena for medical records, that might, that might be a disqualifier there. I'm not sure about that completely. As a clinician, I know that I don't have to submit my, my records to any attorney if anybody, if, you know, you know, as a clinician, I wouldn't have to submit that information because, because we are protected by HIPAA. But looking at, you know, I hesitate to support this only because I think that it could be tightened up a little bit. I think that we could take a look at, you know, making sure that the information isn't anonymized. And I'm not really sure how it's going to be used. I'm not familiar, as the mayor is, on how this information is shared and how it's used and moving forward. So I don't feel comfortable, you know, supporting this at this point in time. And looking at the, you know, just seeing if there's consequences for unauthorized disclosure and making sure that the parents are notified, if at least that, if you can include that in there, that would be really helpful. I think, you know, parents would feel more comfortable knowing, you know, what, that they would be informed. Because I know that even though, you know, FERPA is a good standard, I do think that states do tighten up the laws a little more. And there has been, you know, for example, online data for students here in California, there has been a state law that's been passed where parents can go in and make changes. And, you know, so there, there could be some adjustments here, you know, in West Sacramento. We don't have to, you know, use FERPA as the standard. We can take a look at some standards here in West Sacramento to make it a little tighter.
I mean, the challenge with anonymizing is it defeats all purpose because you can't, you cannot send a record from the, from the school district to us saying that an anonymous child has entered, just entered kindergarten. In order to open the savings account, we must know who the individual is. So anonymous, for, for pure research studies, which we won't be conducting, you know, you know, those to that extent, for pure research studies, that will be anonymous, anonymized data. But, but the bulk of this data is transactional and it does require that the individual data be attached to it. Otherwise, otherwise those families cannot get the benefit of the program because we don't know who they are.
Okay. So the purpose then of sharing the information is to give access, it's not for the study, it's to give access to?
It's both, but the, but the study information, for the study information, we will be getting that information on a, on an anonymized basis.
Okay, for the study.
It won't, it won't show up on a shared drive in City Hall that you and, you know, that you and I could access and see. That, that information will be, will be pulled in a way that will allow for it to be, for us or for a research entity that we might jointly contract with the school district. In the event of a breach, you know, for, for example, if we were to, if we were to cause a breach of the, of the data privacy, the, 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 it's, the school district is, under their existing policies and rules, they have, they will have to notify parents. The consequence will be, will, you know, is part of the agreement with us. But the, but the, so the notification isn't caused by the contract between, with us. If this, if the data under the care of the school district is breached, they will have to notify under their existing responsibility, legal responsibilities, they'll have to notify the parents.
Okay.
Which is why they insisted on all these protocols to make sure that they don't, they never end up in that, in that position.
Okay. All right, anything else on this item?
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Then that was the only one we had on consent. So is there a motion on the consent agenda? Do you want to?
I would like to remove item eight.
Okay, all right. So we'll take up the consent agenda minus item eight. Is there a motion?
I'll move the recommended action.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Ledesma, seconded by Mayor Portem Roscoe. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Here now that motion carries on item eight. Is there a motion?
Yes.
Okay, it's been moved by Mayor Portem Roscoe and seconded by Councilmember Ledesma. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I oppose.
All right, that motion carries. That then brings us to item 10, which is a public hearing and resolution of resolution 19-45 approving the proposed design of the California State Teacher Retirement System Phase Two, Third Street Frontage. Mr. Laffey.
Good evening, Mayor Cabaldon and members of the city council. Before you tonight for your, before you tonight for your consideration is the design of the Third Street Frontage of the second phase of the CalSTRS headquarters, which will be located where the existing surface parking lot is between E and F Street along Third Street. So normally, a design review does not require a city council approval. However, this project is within the Rayleigh's Landing area and subject to a development agreement that the city council approved in 2006, that, which approved the existing tower and the second phase, which is before you tonight. Now, per that development agreement, the second phase requires design review approval from city council with the planning commission recommendation. The development agreement limits the design review to the Third Street Frontage if the city manager determines the project description in the development agreement is consistent with the design and materials of the first phase. The city manager made this determination last September and that is included as attachment number two. So the main reason the development agreement requires design review is to make sure the Third Street Frontage really activates Third Street, it's pedestrian-friendly, they're activating uses along, along the street. So the, the second phase has a, a childcare component on the southern two-thirds and then a cafe along the northern third of the ground floor level. So in order to get the best possible project, the applicant is requesting a deviation from the, the building height standards to allow for a 51-foot building height along the Third Street Frontage compared to the 36 feet that's referenced in Plan Development Overlay 30 and the Washington-specific plan. The applicant has indicated this additional 15 feet along Third Street is needed due to the current energy code requirements and to improve the efficiency of the parking structure. The 36-foot height requirement along Third Street came from the Plan Development Overlay 30 and the Washington-specific plan, which were both written in the late 1980s, early 1990s, and they weren't written with the current energy efficiency standards and building code requirements of today. Now, Plan Development 30 does allow, Washington-specific plan does allow for minor deviations and the Plan Development 30 also says the guidelines are provisional only and are not intended to prevent creative design flexibility. So the planning commission did consider this project at their last meeting on April 18th. The planning, planning commission provided many comments during that meeting that primarily centered around a few main topics. The first one was the operation of the cafe. The planning commission was concerned about bussing tables along Third Street. They just wanted to make sure there wasn't going to be any trash left out along the tables there. There was some questions about the public parking and how much public parking would be available. So this project is providing 66 public parking spaces. The development agreement requires 25, so they are exceeding the requirement. Those public parking spaces will be available for after-hour use, which is in line with what the development agreement requires. There was a question about bike, bike parking. So there is bike parking provided along the sidewalk and the project will also provide bike lockers internal to the project for employees. There was a question about the reflectivity of the main panels along the garage and there was concern that you're reflecting a lot on the neighboring homes. And the, the applicant and the architect clarified that it's not going to be reflective. It's going to have a slight sheen to it, but it won't be reflecting on the homes. And the last concern was about the activation of Third Street. This will have a cafe and the childcare, but those will primarily be operating during business hours. The cafe could operate on the weekends, really it's up to the operator. So there was some concern that these would not be active after-hours, after-business hours. The planning commission ultimately approved resolution 19-4 PC recommending their approval of the design before you tonight. This concludes my staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions and the applicant also has a presentation going more into the design of the building. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Seamus. I, I, I just have one, it's not a question, actually, and it's not even about the project. We are, it's about the, the structure of the, the planning commission report. So we are in, in an evolution. I would think of how we're trying to construct the, the reports from the commissions. So what I, what I would ask is that, and as you think about this in the, the future, we're trying to avoid characterizing the questions or comments of a single commissioner as the commission and so that we're, so we can understand as the council, what did the, what did the commission, which is a body, what did the, what is the commission's recommendation? And it's hard when you report each one of the comments individually. We can't really tell, well, was that, was that one person and was it answered and everybody else was satisfied? Or was the commission at the end as a whole still concerned about that question or not? So I just encourage you to, as, as we're, to, as we're moving this, this, the structure of how we're looking at this to, to focus as, as much as possible on what, what the whole commission. And we've also given the same direction to them is to, as they're passing their resolutions and giving their feedback to us, include in their actions anything that they actually are as a group recommending to us, rather than having you have to sort of say, then one person said this and then another person said that. And maybe the other six people are going, I don't, that doesn't make sense to me, or I don't agree with that. And we would never know. So it's a great, it's a great summary of what happened. Just encourage you to start, start, start moving away from that, that structure of it.
Okay, Councilmember Gurrell, you had a question at this point?
No, I don't.
Okay. Anyone else at this point before we hear from the applicant? All right, then thank you very much.
Mayor Cabaldon, council members, my name is Michelle Azavito. I'm with Ridge Capital and I'm happy to be here tonight and thank you for giving us the opportunity to present the CalSTRS headquarters expansion. I would like to introduce some of the key people on the audience tonight. And then we have a short presentation from our architectural team and then Q and A. Jack Ennis, CEO of CalSTRS. Lisa Blatnick, she's Chief of Administrative Services for CalSTRS. Giselle Geiger, Facilities Planning and Development Manager for CalSTRS. Kathy Berg, she's Principal in Charge for ZGF Architects. And Franco Rossetti, he's also going to be helping us present tonight. Also, Nick Docus and Jake Elliott with Lion Akas, they are part of the design team as well. Jack would like to say a few words, if you don't mind, and then we'll turn it over to the architects and we'll try to be concise.
Thanks, Michelle.
Welcome.
Thank you very much. I'm excited to be here with you, actually, tonight. This is great. I'm just going to kick it off with a few comments and then we'll let the team do a presentation to you. It's been almost 10 years since we landed here in West Sacramento and it's been quite a journey for us. We used to be known as the organization on Folsom Road across from Home Depot. And that was our moniker. Oh, go to Home Depot, CalSTRS is across the street. We, we did a lengthy site search all over the region for this location and we chose West Sacramento for three reasons. We wanted a site that was in the core city. We wanted a site that would amplify our brand as a world-class investor and our commitment to sustainability. And we wanted a community where our employees would reside and find a family atmosphere, good amenities and, and be rewarding for them and engaged employees. And we've accomplished all of that in these 10 years and more. Now we've expanded and it's time to look at Phase Two, which is what we want to talk to you about. Our, our goals from 10 years ago really haven't changed a lot, except a lot has happened in architectural design and energy management. 10 years ago, our building was the most advanced headquarters building in this region. And once again, we decided to invest in a progressive structure that will meet the environmental challenges that are before us in this design. We're an organization that's built on very strong values. We believe in seeking alignment of interest with our business partners, whether it's our money managers or whether it's our partners building a headquarters. We serve just under 1 million teachers and our bond to those members is very strong. We work every day with our friends and organized labor to ensure their financial security. You can be assured that we will carry those same values forward with our stakeholders and labor in constructing this building. We're also pleased to be incorporating building features that will benefit the West Sacramento community. It's very exciting. And when our board heard this proposal, that was much of what excited them, the fact that we would be sharing these amenities, daycare, cafe, assembly space with the community and not just an office building that closed up. So this underscores, again, our values of creating a collaborative relationship with our community. So thank you very much and I'll let Kathy come up now and actually show you the fun part.
Thank you so much, Jack.
Thank you.
So, thank you to the council for the opportunity to present this building. This is the kind of project that really is fun to talk about and exciting to share with you. Interesting you'll be following along with a, a hard copy, much like I have here, as well as the, the images to the left. And what we'd like to do is we click through to that first slide labeled Phase One, you'll see a photo of the building, the existing CalSTRS building as it stands today with a rather quite high river. And you may remember that in the development agreement, there was contemplation for a second, smaller tower as the solution. As we got into the design, if you click to this, the next slide or turn to the next page, as we got into design, we realized that there was a benefit to look at that in a number of different ways. So we did contemplate a tower, but we also looked at the lower building that you see here, which is approximately five stories of office, over five stories of extended parking. And there's several benefits that we found from that. As Jack mentioned, this building is seeking some of the highest standards around sustainability and this helped create more space for photovoltaic system on the roof that will generate power and help us achieve net zero. This building is also seeking to be a really good neighbor. And when we looked at the future development that's contemplated for West Sacramento and some of the planning, we felt that it was more appropriate for this building to begin to step down towards Third Street and some of its neighbors who are not as tall. It also gave CalSTRS a much better floor plate and adjacencies for their workers. And they are also seeking what's called the WELL standard, which is a certification that really focuses on the quality of, of the interior environment, the material selection to help support a healthy community for those people working in the building and coming to the building. On the next page, you'll find the site plan. As you'll see, the Phase One consumes about two-thirds of the site. As you'll see, the Phase One consumes about two-thirds of the site, and the remaining third, which is approximately a rhombus shape, is the site for our Phase Two. In the blue area, both the light blue, which is an outdoor space, and the dark blue is the childcare facility, which will house up to approximately 120 children. The cafe is in the light purple and the darker purple, which represents the back of house and front of house for that function. And the main lobby is in pink. And three large, flexible meeting rooms located at that ground level, which will be open and available to the public at times, are also on that ground level, providing the bulk of the public and active use on that ground level. In addition, you'll see loading and parking accommodated. On the following page, there's a site circulation diagram. You can see that there is a new entry on Waterfront Avenue that will provide access to this building and will also connect inside up to the existing building entry. The cafe entry is located along Third, and we'll show you in a few minutes that, based on comments we got back from the Planning Commission, we have reworked that to allow that cafe to be open after-hours, even if the rest of the building isn't. In gray on this, you will see the 66 parking spaces that have been identified to be open after-business hours, and those would be accessible from East Street on the north through a new parking access. So what I want to then next quickly walk you through is how we got from the beginning of design to where we are today. So the rendering that you see in front of you, you can see the tower in the background and the new building in the foreground. This is looking at it from the intersection of Third, looking to your right up Waterfront Avenue. So there's really a series of steps that we took to break down the mass of the building. If you'll see on the next click, there is a page labeled Massing, and you'll see that there's really three components to the overall campus, the existing Phase One tower, the new five stories of Phase Two office, and then five stories of the Phase Two garage with the ground level being the active-use retail. On the next page, you'll see how we focused on providing some continuity between the existing parking structure and the height datums of where the lower materials carry through to the new parking structure. It was really important for us to make sure that there was consistency between Phase One and Phase Two, even though we're accomplishing some different goals sustainably. So in addition, we're selecting a glazing that will be used for the south and north face that will be very, as close to the glazing of Phase One as possible, meeting the new energy goals and guidelines that were required to meet. So once we have this rather long mass, we wanted to make sure that we break down that scale. So the next slide will show you a series of moves that we made to begin to break this building down. At the ground level, the building is set back from the curb 18 feet. When we get to the top of the parking garage, the bulk of the tower is set back an additional 20 feet. And at the corner, where you see it's labeled Southwest Slice, the building steps back to as far as 60 feet. So we're really beginning to move that mass off of the street face and create a better condition of less shade and shadow on the public right-of-way with this. In addition, there's two cuts into the building that help to further break down that mass, a vertical cut with an outdoor workspace and a horizontal garden terrace that would provide outdoor workspace for the CalSTRS employees and some greenery up on that upper level. The next step is to articulate the building. So you'll see that on the office tower, on the south facade, there are a series of sunshades that will help protect the interior from solar heat gain. On the west face, you'll see those stripes delineating the difference between the glazing on the building and the metal panel on the building. So a series of kind of breaking this scale down. On the lower portion of the parking garage, we've also worked to articulate that and break down that scale with a series of cuts and with a series of panels that would be oriented in different ways to help capture light and break that scale down. The following page, materiality. We've brought some samples with us here today, and we will walk you through where the different materials are. But each of the materials was selected to have then yet another scale of texture. So when we're using concrete, we're looking at board-form concrete, which would carry through the texture of the wood that it's framed with. The aluminum anodized panels that will be on the parking garage will not only be broken into elements, as you see in the mock-up samples here, but will also have articulation within those to break it down to another scale. So what we want to do next is to come from this southwest corner view and really get down into Third Street, which is the purview that we spent a fair amount of time getting feedback from the Planning Commission, and give you a sense of what it'll be like to be up close and personal with this building as you walk along the streetscape. So the slide labeled Childcare Corner, this would be the corner at, again, Waterfront and East Street. And what you're looking at here is, the first layer is a stormwater planter, so that green space on a gorgeous rainy day like today would be filled with stormwater coming off the building that would be pretreated in this particular landscape feature and really tell the story of environmental stewardship that CalSTRS is applying across this project. There's also benches and site furnishings there to encourage people to pause for a moment and enjoy the landscape. And we're continuing to extend that pathway on up to the Riverfront Walk. So you'll see the wide path there maintains the same pavers and guiding people and providing people access up to the main building entry and the Waterfront beyond. The screen that you see here is a vertical glass that has a frit pattern on it that would provide some visual protection for the outdoor play area for the childcare facility. So while you would hear the wonderful sounds of kids playing, we do want to provide them some privacy and protection, so we want to celebrate that noise and that energy, but also provide a little bit of screening there. As you go to the next, working our way down the remainder of the facade, however, it is very transparent. So you would be able to see into the cafe and into the childcare areas when it is active, when they're not sleeping, and really creating a canopy that would also provide protection for people walking along the sidewalk. The next image, you'll see a view looking into that cafe entry. So signage along the street front to help people identify where entries are, and also site furnishings, such as the potential for cafe seating to be out on that sidewalk area, both perhaps up against the building and also out in the site furnishing zones where we're planting with native landscape and providing places for people to sit outside and enjoy the cafe, also expand the amount of seating and the number of people that could be served. The next slide will show you just a few images of the interior of the cafe. On the corner on East Street, it is a double-height space, which also helps to really activate that street corner with more visibility in and out of the building. And the final image is a view looking south along Third Street, where you can see the little bit of light glowing off the garage panels above, as well as the trees that will be planted. We will be replacing the trees that are currently there now with new trees all the way along that block and matching the development that has been working its way down Third and approved by the city on other projects. And again, one more click is that double-height corner at the cafe, where you can see we're really trying to maximize the activity and the visibility on the corner. So the final slide will quickly walk you through some of the materials that we have. Franco, just point out where the different materials are used. So on the upper office building, we have two different glazings, two different glosses. So the one on the left there will be used on the east and west facade when it's in conjunction with metal panel, as well as on the base on Third Street, where we want a very transparent visibility into the building. On the north and south side, it will be the darker blue glass, which is a match for Phase One. The remainder of the east and west facade of the five stories, upper five stories of office tower, will be a metal panel. It's a painted metal panel with nine different layers of paint that create a panel that catches light in different ways throughout the different times of day. And if you've driven by CalSTRS throughout the day, you can see that the existing building does something similar. On the lower parking garage, we've selected an anodized aluminum extrusion. These represent the shape, but not the finish, of those panels. It is designed to be a naturally ventilated garage, so there will be space between the panels, but they are oriented to make sure that you don't see the headlights of cars or parked cars within. And the aluminum color that we've selected for that was designed to be complementary to the porcelain tile that's on the existing Phase One building. So that is where we are today with the design. We're very, very excited about the potential to see this break ground in the near future, and would love any questions or comments.
All right. Why don't we begin exclusively with questions, just to structure our work? So just questions, and then we'll proceed to public comment, and then we'll return for council observations and comments and deliberation of vote. All right, so begin with Mayor Potembarosco.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your presentation. You had mentioned that up to 120 children could participate in the childcare facility. Is that 120 children from West Sacramento, or is it combined with the employees? Is there going to be some type of order?
Looking to see if we want to phone a friend here.
I'll speak on behalf of Lisa. Well, I don't know if you know this, but CalSTRS is working with the City of West Sacramento on the child, moving the childcare, actually, from across the street to the new building. And so it will be a combination of open to the public and also CalSTRS employees' children. So I don't think we know what the mix will be yet or what the demand will be in three years, but it is open to the public. There is a public availability.
And the meeting space within, the meeting space that you talked about, would that be something that any ordinary West Sacramentoan could come in and rent for activities, events, weddings, whatnot?
Yeah, we would have a meeting policy like we do now for, you know, we allow our boardroom to be used by some entities and just like, you know, there's ground rules around that, but we would see the same thing for this, as long as it was a sensible orderly environment.
Oh, so not West Sacramento.
Exactly. Excluded.
But that was the intent. We want to work these rooms hard. So, I mean, I think that's obviously what we want to get out of that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Sandin.
I have comments, I think.
Okay.
Do you want, this is questions?
No, just questions at this point. Okay. Councilmember Guerrero?
Can you help me understand the parking and where it's at? I'm having a hard time visualizing what it's going to look like and where it's at. Is there a particular slide, and then point me to the direction?
Sure. So if you go back to Slide Five, that shows the colored floor plan. So if you have been in the existing building, you'll know that there is a covered parking garage that exists today. That is approximately five stories of covered parking.
Okay.
We're going to basically extend that, extrude that across the new site. So we're using the same ramps, the same entrances, the same exits.
I see.
And extending it over what is currently the surface parking lot.
I see. Okay.
So the 66 spaces that would be available would be covered. They would be on the first level of that garage.
Okay.
And you would enter from the north, not just west of the current entry.
Okay. Not at the current entry, but?
The current entry will still remain an entry, but because we're increasing the number of cars we have in the garage, we're adding a second entry on that East Street side. Correct.
On the East Street side. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. And are you going to charge, or is there going to be some entity that's going to take a responsibility for fees?
We have a, we are going to use, it's still an outside party. Yeah, we do today, actually. An outside party manages our parking for us, and we charge for public parking now.
You do? Okay. All right. Good to know. Thank you.
Any questions? Okay. I don't have any questions at this point, so thanks. We're going to move to public comment, and then we'll return.
Thank you.
Right. And we just have one more question. That's for Steve Owen.
It's a hearing.
It is, actually. Always councilmember Sandin with the.
Hello, everybody. How you doing?
Just a second. Let me open a public hearing on this item.
Sorry.
Now, no, no.
We good?
Yeah, we can't talk till the hammer falls, so welcome.
I just want to talk about parking a little bit. I live on Third Street. I own five properties on Third Street. The parking garage, CalSTRS has not been a good neighbor with the parking garage. They clean it at anywhere from 10:30 PM Sunday night till 5:00 in the morning with vac trucks, blowers, steam cleaners. I don't see a parking garage coming closer to my house. I can't sleep anyway already because of the situation. I really think that CalSTRS needs to change their days of cleaning the parking garage. I don't know why they clean it so much, but that's a whole other thing. The parking on Third Street has not been in any of the plans. None of those old houses have garages, and so we park on Third Street. Is there any way that they can not take our parking? Because I see all the streets all painted up. It's all ready to go. And the other thing I need to talk about is when they built the original building, they used energy-efficient glass that burns holes in our drapes, our lawns, our umbrellas, everything you can think of. 5 o'clock summertime, holes start burning. So I think someone really needs to look at the reflection value of all that stuff, because the original building has just destroyed our stuff. And when they built it, MCM Construction was not a friend of the neighbors. They were terrible. So we have old houses. You got to respect the houses. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Then with that, we're going to close the public hearing, and Seamus, return to you. I'm not sure if any of this testimony was also provided by Planning Commission or previously to staff, but could you provide any background on some of the issues that were just raised?
So the reflectivity of the existing building was not raised at Planning Commission. The on-street parking for construction, I don't believe there's any on-street parking currently along that side of Third Street, but that side of Third Street would be sectioned off for construction. And the parking is time-restricted, and there are permits available for existing residents.
All right. So in terms of the review of the reflectivity for the materials at the new building, you reviewed?
For the new building, that was reviewed by Planning Commission.
But I guess I'm more interested, was it reviewed by technical folks, including, you know, out of your shop or otherwise?
Not by the planning division, no.
All right. I don't know if the applicant or the architect has any additional information on that issue, on that question?
I think I'm the only one who has history from the Phase One. So to address some of your concerns, I think the cleaning, I just don't, I don't think that CalSTRS was aware of a cleaning issue, but now they are aware, so I'm sure they will work with their property management people to address the timeframes for the cleaning of the garage. When Phase One was built, HMH Builders did go and visit with every house owner on the street and photographed and whatnot. This construction type will be a little bit different. There will not be pile driving as there was with the first phase. This will be an auger cast pile, kind of, they screw the piles in, more or less, so there's not going to be the pounding that there was for Phase One. So hopefully, that will address some of the concerns. Parking, whoever parks on Third Street, is not controlled by CalSTRS. I know that during construction, we will not be parking on Third Street. We are working with the city to make arrangements for construction parking, and CalSTRS is also working with as a garage to ensure that some of their staff can park in the garage. The second phase of the building, there was not going to be as much glazing as there was on Phase One, just because energy code these days just doesn't, prohibits it, basically. So there's a lot less glass on this new phase. Kathy, I don't know if you have any more information on that. I'm not, I mean, we have not been aware of any of the glare issues that were just made, commented on tonight. It doesn't seem like, I can't answer that right now. Other than the glazing, you know, does fall within the building parameters that we must, you know, comply with. I don't know if there's any other questions or?
Well, I guess, is there, I mean, do architects use a model or some other mechanism to actually determine, to forecast what the glare and the reflectivity will be across the street or at any particular location off of the building?
Well, we do do studies, sun studies. Where does the sun fall, and, you know, where is the reflect, I mean, we have done that. There's, on this building, I think it will be a little bit different, because the garage is five levels, you know, above, so any reflectivity should not be down on the homes, but it should be up. I don't know. There's, on this building, I think it will be a little bit different because the garage is five levels, you know, above. So any reflectivity should not be down on the homes, but it should be up. I, I don't know. Let me, I'll just stop there. Don't get in trouble, unless Kathy, you have a more informed answer.
Just to add a little bit of context to this, so the window to wall ratio in our building for the west face that will be facing the neighbors along Third Street is about 40%, which is actually fairly low and competitive because of the energy targets that we're trying to hit. In addition, where we do have higher percentages of glazing, so at the cut and at the canopy, those are recessed in and will be in shade most of, most of the day by design, because again, we want to avoid that heat gain on the building. When it comes to the reflectivity of the materials themselves, you know, we do have samples here to get a sense. We've spent a lot of time onsite outside looking at the, the quality and the character of those materials. They are not by their nature reflective. They are not a mirror surface. They are actually a matte finished surface that will, the light will disperse as opposed to, to focus. And we don't have anywhere on the building right now that, you know, some of the, some of the buildings that really get into trouble, inward curves can tend to focus light. Everything that we have here is, is a flat plane or moving the opposite direction. So we do feel pretty confident that we are not creating glare situations. Having said that, there's always some change that comes with buildings moving in and so it's in some regards impossible to avoid some change to the environment with a new building. But we are definitely taking pains to mitigate any reflectivity.
Is it, is it, I mean, given that this building will obscure then a portion of the existing building?
Yes.
Is it, I mean, is it, is it also possible that this will, this could substantially reduce any?
If it is the glazing that's causing the issue, I mean, you can even see in this view, in the view that you're looking at on the top of this sheet, we're standing, you know, well back from the distance. The phase one tower is in there, but we're not seeing it. So it is, it is very likely that the new building will shade those houses from the existing building.
And in that view, there is space, is that Third Street?
That is, that is standing, yes, on the Third Street side, probably about two blocks away from the building.
Okay.
That helps. Thank you.
Yeah, that's very helpful.
Sure.
Okay. Other, other follow-up questions? All right. Then let's proceed to comments and discussion. Questions can come back too, but councilmember Sandin.
Thank you. Thank you. The, I think the item before us really is about the consistency and the, just the third, the Third Street facade. I believe that's, that's what's before us, not anything really else about the project. I happen to be on Planning Commission when we were talking about the stepping down to the neighborhood and it, to me, this, this design does that. And having the different kinds of materials really does have it, it seems like it has some textures and some depth that's going back toward the taller structure. So I, I'm, I'm pleased with the, the way this is, is looking, having some of the kind of outer facing programming, is it, is additional kind of wonderful community benefit, having childcare, having a cafe, having some accessible parking. So to me, I can think that activates that, the, the street scape along Third. So I'm supportive of this moving forward.
Councilmember Guerrero?
Yes. Just want to say thank you very much, you know, for the presentation and all the information and your innovative ideas on what this is going to look like for West Sacramento and also appreciate your, your commitment, working with our labor partners. That's incredibly important for me. And hoping that, you know, learning from the resident, you know, continuing that, you know, partnership with the residents, you know, so that, you know, they're aware if they have any concerns or anything, you know, just working together with you directly. And it's ongoing relationship building. There's going to be a lot of, you know, growth in that area. So just want to maintain, you know, a good partnership with everyone there and appreciate all you've done to, to really explore, you know. I heard a little bit of a presentation on the state of the city address and what's happening there. I was so excited for this presentation and I can see that you're, you're doing some great work. So thank you very much for what you're doing.
Mayor Ledesma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Jack and team, Michelle and the team for the, for the presentation today. And Jack, you're right, I was on the Planning Commission too, and this was all contemplated 10 years ago. And, you know, I remember the very robust conversation we had about phase two. And back then, it seemed like, oh, that's never going to happen. I have 30 years, I'll be, you know, it's like the Magellan Bridge. We didn't contemplate that, but.
And then we're going to recession.
Yeah, exactly. But, so it's exciting to see this come to us and come to a reality. We, we are well aware of the work you did and your board did to get approval for this project. And to have you and your board be supportive of West Sacramento, continue our growth here is an exciting moment and the commitment, and we appreciate that. And you have been a good neighbor. You, we've been a really good neighbor. You've been a really good neighbor by way of continuing to invest in us and your involvement in the community from whether it's helping us on our transit, street car mobility, helping us when we were coming out of the recession and all the things you've done to support us. The building itself is what, no less what, the design is no, no less what we'd expect and what you entered at a few weeks ago and bringing to us, to our community. And that is, even 10 years ago, and then councilmember Sandin, I remember there was discuss, the discussion around the importance of Third Street and getting things down to the street level. And we missed opportunities with the Ziggurat and the parking lot, but we really needed, if I was worried about anything, is our ability to execute on that. And so I'm super pleased to see today the integration of not just having a daycare facility for us utilized, but to opening it up to the community, to being able to be that, for its accessible, its visibility, so it's part of the community as well as the cafe, no matter who the operator may be, the fact that it'll be open. And what I saw was it's actually going to be contemplated to be on sidewalk and on the, as part of the fabric, which is what we had, had hoped and will continue to be that bridge between the work we're doing in the Washington neighborhood, just a few blocks down, and going south towards the Capitol Yards and, and the Bridge District where we anticipate more work. So it's nice to know that this is coming and will bridge that, that neighborhood where there's activity and you activate a neighborhood. And there will be things to be conscious of, and I appreciate our neighbor coming out today and giving his view of what life was like 10 years ago when you bought the first building out. And I think we need to listen to that. But I'm supportive of this because I know you've, you've been a good steward of our, of our community and of our environment by making this a truly state-of-the-art, sustainable building. I would ask that, you know, we do look into maybe a little further into the reflectability, into what it might cause. I think that is worthy of note. And I understand that with the additional trees, I don't think those trees today, Seamus, they don't get up, they're not too big today. So, so having maybe larger trees that can provide shade and cover to the area might be actually a better. The only additional question I had around it was, we talked about bike stops and, and looking for opportunities to, how do, how do we incorporate into, the parking garage makes sense, you need that, but the work we're doing with mobility, having additional space to build and maybe that's sort of bike space for bikes, our bike share program through jump bikes or scooter program, have a, a base there. The one thing, I know the folks down the street at Burgers &amp; Brew and Devil Make Care and La Crosta know is they, they depend on that area for, and the people there for business. I mean, that's their lunch spots, their ice cream space and having some shared mobility there. So maybe there's opportunity to incorporate a bike station there or some other mobility there. There used to be in planning, we always have curb outs or cutaways in the curb for buses. And I think buses still come by there by way of the agreement we have with Calsters and the rest of the Washington neighborhood. But V is also, you know, how do we incorporate a new brand of mobility into design is something that I'd like my staff to follow up with you on and to see whether there's opportunities there.
Yeah, we're very excited about the jump bike and scooter thing. Right now, we have a station in the front of the building over at the, at the main loop that comes in. And actually, I get complaints from our employees, they come out at 5:00 and they're all gone. I mean, it's a good complaint to have, but it tells you just how much they're being used. So anything we can do to support the program, we're huge on that. Absolutely.
Terrific. But again, I appreciate all the work Jack and you and the team have done and been a part of the community and look forward to kind of seeing what's next.
Mayor Potemorosco.
We could always get a zip line. So speaking of the line, one of the things that I saw that excited me a lot about my trip to DC was an opportunity to see this converted church, The Line DC. Imagine a big marble, you know, structure. It doesn't look like a hotel inside, but it's been renovated and a lot of local resources used to reactivate a space that had been underutilized. And now it is like the heart of Adam's Morgan Place that. I mean, as somebody who just recently had a child graduate from preschool, it's still on the radar and it's on the radar of a lot of my friends, especially in the fact that we have not enough. Nobody has enough childcare facilities to meet the demand. And to see that we can open up those possibilities for a lot of people in our community, there's such a shortage, that and after-school care, that, that really makes me happy to hear. One of the other comments I had is the encourage, the fact that the design encourages, you know, I think, you know, a lot of folks don't even think about the fact how a building could contribute to crime rates in a city. And to think that, you know, seeing the Septod design and the lighting, I mean, the glass, it really does encourage the connections between folks, but also just the eyes out on our community to see what's going on out there. That's really important to me. So, yeah, I, I love the modern design. I love the renewable energy concepts, the, you know, the fact that you mentioned solar and it looks urban. Again, I appreciate the comments from our members of our local community that they take the time out to come out and actually make a comment, whether it be absolutely positive or over the top or, you know, otherwise, because. I really, I'm excited about the, the environmental stewardship and just all the opportunity that this design provides our community. So thank you for all the hard work.
Keeping in mind what councilmember Sandin said, I mean, the, the project's fully approved. The use of the land, the construction of a, of a full, of a full-blown tower is already approved. So we're, we're not here tonight about the project, yes or no, or about what's in the project, what the components of the project are, but really just the design. And that's because Jack and his colleagues insisted that if we're going to make the first investment, we want to make sure that we can make the second investment later. And we like doing business that way, too. And so all we have before us is the, is the design questions. And in some respects, even some of the issues that have been raised in tonight's testimony and also by commissioners, this is a much, is a far superior alternative for all of those issues than the originally approved tower would have been. And so this is, this is, this reflects a lot of learning about, over, over that 13 years. And also it reflects, I think, you know, it's, it's very significant that it reflects a, a confidence in Calsters, frankly, that, you know, the, the objective 13 years ago, as Jack was, as Jack was saying, was to make us, make partly to make a statement about Calsters is the, you know, the, is the underdog, you know, massively important pension fund on the planet, you know, serving the teachers of California. And they, and the teachers and their, and their, their future deserved a better profile than they had, you know, behind Home Depot. And that's no longer, that's no longer the need. The, I mean, Calsters is, is, has achieved all of that through this building, but also through all of its, you know, its good works and its, its strong investments. And so to see that the pivot to now the focus is on wellness and, and around, you know, different set of statements that are being made and standards that are being set, just as the original tower set the region, you know, set the region on a course towards believing that it could aspire to a much higher standard of environmental sustainability, green buildings, respect for interaction with the environment and investments in, in unexpected places. All of that was accomplished and now this building is setting, setting really important standards in a whole new, in a whole new way. So I, so many development projects that we see, we always have to take with a grain of salt. You know, you see the 100% project, you're like, well, it's probably only going to be 70%. And even that 70%, it's, we end up having, the developer comes back to us and asks us to pay for 20% of the 70. So with Calsters, the commitments from that original project 13 years ago have come in at 150%. And that's remarkable and, and because of the scale of the project and of the institution, it's been, I mean, it's been community changing in, in only positive ways. And I think it's been referenced both directly and indirectly, you know, the, the things that we're starting to treasure the most about, about that original part of our city, the Burgers &amp; Brew and Devil Make Care and Stone Music and West Side Coffees, that, that, what appears to be now like the quintessentially, you know, West Sacramento place that did not exist before, before Calsters and couldn't survive without Calsters. And, and all the investments in big and small of resources, but more often of the time of, of, you know, some of the most talented people, including, including the CEO, but, but throughout the organization in, in nonprofit organizations, the Chamber, probably the Rotary and, and, you know, Computers for Kids and all, all kinds of, of activities, the sorts of things you would expect from a small business that was, you know, just sponsoring Little League. Calsters is, is that small business times a million. And, and so it's been an absolutely fantastic transformative project in phase one, in the, in the first, in the first, in the first building. And what has, the evolution of the design and the confidence and the aspiration of what Calsters is attempting to do here is really extraordinary. So I want to say thank you to Jack and to the whole team at Calsters, but also to the architects and the team that's been, that's been helping to realize what I know is a very, very aspirational vision. And also thank the board members who aren't here, but who've come to the last two years of states of the, of the state of the city, from across the state to, to come to our community, because I think they, they also share our, our aspiration and, and for, for the future of both our community and the place, but of Calsters as well. So the design, I think, is, is, is smart. It's very, very attentive to the key, what was the key issue back then and which continues to be the key issue, which is street activation. You know, how does it, how does something this important and globally significant work at the street level and activate exactly the kinds of things that we've, that we've been talking about, walking and scootering and biking, two places for people? And the kinds of amenities that are completely community focused that we've, that have been already hailed so many times tonight are a great way to accomplish that. And I, I was surprised and very pleased that you were, that you took another look at the cafe, you know, at least having the physical possibility of being open at times that Calsters is not itself open. We all have, we have plenty of buildings where we've tried to put cafes and we know that, that they have to operate. They have to, you know, they have to be successful and they have to make money. And so somebody has to be wanting to go there on Sundays, but at least making sure that it's not physically impossible to be open on the weekends is a, is a really great improvement, even since the Planning Commission meetings. So thank you for the work, the, the continuous improvements. And I would say the, you know, the, the language that we have in the, in the Plan Development 30 text that, you know, that describes innovation and says that, you know, here are the, here are the. that, you know, that describes innovation and says that, you know, here are the guidelines, they're really important, but, you know, they shouldn't get in the way of creative solutions, it's for exactly this kind of situation, when you have a project and a team that, whose aspirations are fully consistent and maybe even bigger than yours, that you can unleash them to do amazing things that you couldn't have imagined. And that is, that's so fundamentally a West Sacramento way, I had to look it up, and that language dates at least back to 1986. You know, it wasn't, it was Clark Cameron and George De Mars on the Board of Supervisors before we were a city. One of the last acts of the County Board of Supervisors is those two wrote that language in. This is not some new millennial view of the world around iteration, this was, you know, creative. Creative solutions should not be, should not fall as a consequence of our rules and our procedures. And so, that's been part of us for at least, at least a half-century. So, and this project is a great example of why. So, thanks for your work, and I think we're ready to proceed to a motion.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. See no further discussion, all those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, turned none, that motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to item 11, which is a workshop on the operations and maintenance budget for fiscal years 2019, '20, and 2020, '21.
It sounds like we need an intermission, so the stage could be...
I gotta go to the airport soon, so...
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was actually going to introduce this item, so as there...
Do you have to go now?
No, in a little bit, but... Okay, so...
This'll be easy.
So, just by way of introduction, you probably noticed that this budget process looks a little different for those of you that have been on the council for a while than previous budgets, and that is by design. It's not coincidental, we have a newish, I'll say, because she's not so new, Administrative Services Director, Roberta and myself, in my role, this being both of our first two-year budget adoption. It's also not coincidental related to that, that we have the convergence of a few things that make this budget different. It's a different economic picture for certain, but it's also a different picture in terms of the scope of the needs for the city looking ahead are, you know, they're multifaceted. So, part of the process here is looking at the whole picture, doing it in a prudent way, so we can still adopt a O&amp;M budget on time and deal with some of the issues that Roberta's going to get into. But I did want to take this opportunity to acknowledge her, she's done a ton of work in this process, and the extended team, all the directors in the city and the staff that work on the budget, also her team and her department, most notably Rebecca Robertson, who's new to us, and also Rob Miller, who is, I think, literally rebuilding a budget system as we speak. It's been integral to this process. So, thank you all for your work, and I'll turn it over to Roberta. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Good evening, members of the council. I will add to a little bit of what Erin said in a moment, but if we can flip to the first slide. Thank you, Chris, I just assumed you were doing that for me. The agenda tonight is going to be a little different. So, the council has provided a detailed packet, and so for this discussion, I really plan on just focusing on some of the highlights and the areas where we're hoping for your input and feedback before we bring back a final budget for adoption. So, tonight, we'll look at a little bit of background on the process, primarily for the new council member and anybody in the, in the audience who's listening, talk about the scope of this workshop, the next steps in the process. We'll look at the budget assumptions used, including what is included and what's not included in the budget before you tonight, and then looking at some notable changes. We do have, sort of at the end of the slide, some of the major fund summaries, they are regurgitations of what is in your packet, and so they're there just in case we need to refer back to them. And then, and then we've got a summary of the feedback that we're requesting from council, and of course, any other comments or feedback that you might have. So, flipping to the next slide on the background to just sort of, key off of what the city manager said, the city typically adopts a two-year budget, we do that in the odd-numbered years. In between, we'll bring like a midterm or a mid-year, mid-cycle process to for any adjustments that we need. The budget needs to be adopted by the city council before the fiscal year begins, and because of staffing changes in 2018 and other things like developing a new budget system, they've impacted the budget development timeline and process. And so, I also need to say, we lost a very longstanding, very respected budget manager at the end of August. I was very lucky to pick up Rebecca in February, and so for that period of time, our IT manager was sort of, had a second job as a budget manager, really helping pull together the data, slice and dice, get me history, and help to build a new system that I think is a lot more transparent and workable for the staff, provides a lot of background, so people can go back and see what they requested, what's happened through the process, and then a lot of those details will be loaded into our system just to allow for better and easier management of the budget going forward for departments. So, I, yeah, I could not have done this without those two people, for sure, and because of that and because of the timing of Becky starting, we really have been focusing on this the last three or four months in earnest. But part of this process, especially developing the new budget system and a new CIP system and some of the changes that we have included into the report for you and that we're proposing going forward to improve efficiency and transparency, it required a real reconciliation of sort of everything that was in the old system, which is 20 years' worth of data, 20 years' worth of projects. And so, we really needed to go through those, yeah.
Just trying to do a quick time check, because we're going to lose one of us, and it's me, in about an hour, a little over an hour. So, in terms of the lead-up to the content, I just, you might want to...
Sure. Okay. So, anyway, a lot of reconciliation that we need to do, new people looking at a lot of, a lot of things and getting familiar with it. And so, because of that, we didn't want to rush the process and come forward and have you make decisions on things where we thought we really needed to spend a little bit more time and make sure we have the funds available and we understood what was going on. So, that is why we're looking at a different process. So, the objective of this workshop is really to solicit feedback from the council to inform our final budget development, get some policy direction on a few changes that we're proposing, and so that you're aware of the assumptions that we used in developing this, so you can provide feedback there. The scope of the workshop is focusing on the operations and maintenance budget, with really, there's four supplemental requests that we're putting before you tonight. And the reason there's only four, because there are a lot more submitted, is those are the things that we thought were time-sensitive, that really deserve some consideration now. And then, there are no capital projects in here yet. So, the process is, today we've got a workshop on the O&amp;M budget, we will bring that back with your, with your input for adoption in June, and we will continue working on the CIP and the other pieces of it, and come back for one or two more workshops and adoption in August of the full picture. And part of that was so you have everything in front of you to make good decisions when we bring in. So, there's the background. We'll move on to instruction and assumptions, and I will go quickly, you've got this all in your report. But really, the instruction to departments this year was, for now, we're working with the status quo budget, but we wanted them to look at things that were impacting that and put in the request for what they actually need to do to perform the functions and provide the services that they do today. So, that includes increased utility costs, increases in minimum wage, other things that go up. So, you will see some increases in this budget, and they're related to that. Any new requests, replacements, equipment, changing how we're doing business, those are all coming to you on what we call a decision package, and that'll come later in the process. So, notable changes, I talked about this in the report, so I can probably skip through some of this, but changing how we charge our revenues and our inter-fund transfers and IT charges, so that everything is in one cost center, so it makes it easier to manage a budget for a particular cost center, and also very easy to see how that cost center's performing and the revenues that are being brought in. We will be creating a new CIP fund for all capital projects. It's a little bit difficult now because they're in, they reside in operating funds, and so when there's multiple funding sources, that's where part of our reconciliation is really heavy. And so, by having it in all, in one fund, it'll make it more transparent and easier to manage. We're also splitting out one-time general fund expenses to a one-time general fund, just to help with trend analysis and really seeing, you know, the impacts to our operating budget going forward. The personnel, labor costs are budgeted at existing salary levels with anticipated range movement for people who have some room in the range and are slated to move up. There are no estimates included for any of the labor negotiations that are ongoing now. So, the only labor changes that are in the budget are those that are in approved MOUs, that would be the PLA and the PMA that were approved last year. Payouts for anticipated retirements are included, and so we'll usually see some bumps in some of those numbers, that has to do with anticipated retirements and those leave payouts. We have included updated estimates for PERS and our other post-employment benefits. And we'll talk a little bit about what those, what the magnitude of those changes are in a minute. And then it includes some position reallocations, which are summarized on the next slide. This is just a summary of them, you have a matrix with all of the positions, the specific changes and the reasons for those in your, in your packet, but it's really realigning how positions are allocated to what funds based on, you know, what's actually happening, where people are performing their work and services. So, a couple significant things to note for administrative services, we've arranged, changed the allocations to the successor agency. We've received $250,000 a year for administration of the wind down of the former redevelopment agency, and we had a couple of positions that were charged at higher levels to the successor agency. We've really spread that out among several staff members who are performing different levels of work related to that. The other thing that has come up City Manager's office, rather than having inter-fund transfers from the port and from the Community Investment Fund, we're charging time directly, and that is partially because it makes a lot more sense, and also it was a comment on a recent LAFCO review of the port. And for the Police Department, we have moved the homeless coordinator, who was previously funded by Measure E, into the general fund. So, those are some of the larger changes. Again, the details of all of them are included in your packet. So, moving on, we can go over budget assumptions. Again, they're all included here, but I want to talk about a couple of notable ones. Property tax, we're looking at a 4.6% increase for the current year, over the last year, for a total of about $26.2 million, and that's the largest revenue source for our general fund, it's about half of it. 3% per year thereafter. Also included in 1920 is an additional $770,000, and $1.13 million in the next year due to payoff of some successor agency debt, that then, some of the, that payoff, about half of that rolls back into our general fund, and so that's included in our, in our report. For sales tax, it might look odd to you, we're looking at a 16.3% increase for the current year, and then a decrease of a little over 3% next year, and then a slight increase. And part of that has to do with the transition from Board of Equalization to the new California Department of Tax and Fee. I know the term, and every time I try and say it in public, I lose it. So, anyway, the issues with that transition and them implementing a new system meant that in the last fiscal year, we did not get all of the sales tax that was actually due to us for that year. So, it was lower in the last year, it's catching up in the current year, which makes for that large jump. It goes down a little bit next year because it normalizes for some of that, and then we've got a pretty standard increase thereafter. The TOT revenues, we're looking at about, almost a 13% increase for the current year. That really has to do partially with the findings from the recent audits that we did that brought in an additional $100,000 in past TOT due, and also increased the TOT going forward, because if there were errors that people weren't including certain types of payments in that calculation, now they will going forward. And a 5% per year increase thereafter, and that is different than what you've seen in the past, really looking at the historical trends, we see that the increase in TOT is much larger than what we've been including in our budget.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Just on the budget assumptions, and Roberta, good to see you, and thank you for, more general comments later on your approach, but on the property tax and the 3% increase, what's it been for the past five-year period? I mean, I'm just, I'm still recovering from the post-recession era when we just sunk and then we were climbing up, we were waiting for, you know, some of the property tax owners were putting in for appeals, and I'm just trying to get a sense of the 3% increase and kind of reasonableness of that.
Sure. I know there were some significant declines during the recession, prior to that, our increases were much, much higher. And if you'd asked me that a couple of months ago, I could have told you right off the top of my head, and now I'm inundated with numbers. But I do know that in our budgets previously, we've included a 2% increase, they've typically come in over that, we're seeing a lot of property turnover, and so the county's really going for a 3% to 4% increase countywide. And the 3% increase aligns with our most likely revenue forecast that we provided in the, in the sort of long-term model that we were looking at. It still might be a little conservative for the next two years, but going back the last five years, I believe that we were around that or a little bit higher, but I can't tell you with certainty now, I can certainly bring that information back.
I'm sure it was, it's just was the base was so, I mean, there's no, there has been no, no, no normal, you know, looking back historically, the last eight to 10 years hasn't been, even the years you brought up pre-recession were inflated.
Right.
So, again, just trying to find where we are in the cycle, or kind of, and glad to say you're going to look at this for the next two years, is sort of a baseline and...
Yeah, I will bring that information back when I come back, but the other thing that we'll do, looking at all of the other requests that are coming in in the CIP, is drop that into the long-term model, so we can look at what that looks like going forward, but I'll bring some additional information on that.
Thank you for the question.
Okay. So, cannabis revenues is the next thing. We, we're projecting about $520,000 for next year and $600,000 for the following year. Those have actually gone up, we've received a payment last week that related to the previous quarter for a new business that's in operation. So, we're looking at about $700,000 for 1920 and about $740,000 for 2021, and this year, looking at approximately $675,000. So, we are seeing some increases in the revenue from cannabis businesses. Overall, general fund revenues for the current year, just slightly over $54 million is our projection, that's about a 6.7% increase from the prior year. Again, that has to do, again, with the sales tax timing, and also looking at our property tax. And I know for the current year, we're looking at about a 4.6% increase in property tax, and that's pretty in line with the last few years, if I remember correctly, so that might help answer your question. Total, oh, and then for the next two years, slight increase for 1920 and about 3.85% for 2021. For expenses, we're looking at about $51.6 million in the current year, that's a little over a 9% increase from the prior year. Again, that has to do with PERS increases, the one-time bonuses that were provided to some employees in the current year, and then also one-time costs that have historically been included in the general fund, which we're removing to sort of give us better trend lines to work from. The decrease in 1920 of about 2.3% is primarily in the salaries line item, again, because of the not having one-time bonuses included this year, and then, again, for not having the other one-time transfers and capital outlay hit in the general fund. So, continuing with our budget assumptions, our general fund surplus, we're actually projecting a surplus this year of about $2.5 million, that goes up a little bit, maybe about $200,000 with those, the change in the cannabis projections, about $3.8 million next year, and $4.4 million in the following year. So, it's important to note when we're looking at some really positive numbers here, that there are several things that are not included in those numbers. So, any assumptions for labor negotiations, there are two units right now in negotiations that are not included. Any other labor assumptions for unrepresented groups or groups that might be coming to negotiations in the future are not included in the budget right now. The supplemental requests, with the exception of the four that we'll talk about tonight, are not included, and those are pretty significant. I did note, at least for the general fund piece, what those totaled in your report. Capital project funding, any transfers to reserves, including the general facilities fund, are not included. Funding for facilities we know we need, like the next phase of the corpyard, police station, et cetera, not included. Funding for equipment and facilities and vehicle replacements are also not included, and I know that's something that we're working on, it was identified as a strategic plan priority for this year. Also not included is, one of the funds that we'll be talking about tonight, the Public Works Engineering Fund, has a deficit over the next two years that is typically filled by the general fund, it's about $400,000 to $500,000, and that is also not included. So, when we're looking at some positive numbers here that I think are really great, there are also some decisions that the council will be making in the next round, so we can't get too excited yet about having, having a lot of extra money today. So, also to note, to anything that does come forward, that council does take action on related to any of the labor negotiations currently underway, we would do our best to include those in the final budget that would be presented to you in June. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Thank you. So some additional assumptions for general fund or more information really, the CalPERS increases for the general fund are about 11% per year, which is about 660 to 690,000 annually over the next two years. For all funds, it's about 10% or 1 million. That includes general fund, but just to give you a little bit of magnitude. The general fund, as we talked about, includes the minimum wage increases for part-time staff, but does not include any increases for compaction. So as you bring the minimum wage up, if it's, if longer-term employees are already at that level, we have not made any adjustments there. And that's something that will be included as a supplemental in the next round. The budget does include the negotiated wage and benefit changes in the adopted MOUs. For the POA and PMA, that includes a transfer in from the Measure N fund to cover those as was included in the MOU when it was adopted in June. There is about a 6.3% increase in the operations and maintenance budget request, just the O and M portion of the budget for 1920. And that is to right-size the budget for the minimum wage increases, the utility cost increases and those types of things. And then it normalizes to about 1% increase for the next fiscal year. And then for all funds, again, we talked about the CalPERS. We've also included increased annual required contributions for our OPEB payments based on an actuarial that was completed a couple of months ago. And the one thing that you should note, because of the transfer of CIP to a new fund, the projections for 18, 19, for any funds that also include CIP, include a projection to spend the entire amount of the CIP that's been appropriated. Because the goal would be to move the funding, along with the budget, into the new fund. But that is all something, the things that we'll be continuing to reconcile and look at over the next couple of months before we bring back the CIP for you to review. So with that, we've got four decision packages, which is what we're calling them. They're actually supplemental requests, but you will note an attachment in your packet that actually includes something called a decision package. The purpose of that was really to include all of the information that would be necessary for the council to make an informed decision on whether or not to move those forward. So there are four. In the general fund, we've included a request to enter into a capital lease, basically finance a new aerial fire apparatus to replace our 26-year-old apparatus that's currently in reserve status. The reason that's included tonight is it has a very long lead time to build and so we thought we might try and get started sooner than later. And we've got the fire chief here to answer any questions if you have any about that. For the Measure E fund, we are requesting an additional $87,000 transfer to help fund a gap for the preschool funding with the loss of the impact grant funds. There is a bigger issue with that that I think will be brought to council for its own workshop. So we've only included the gap funding for one year in our request today. In Measure K, we've requested to move one road maintenance worker from the road fund to the Measure K fund. The reason for that is really to help bring that fund out of a structural deficit. We've done a lot of work on, you know, other allocations and things that we can do in that fund, but this was one more thing that we thought could really help to bring that fund into the black. And the last request today is that the Public Works Engineering Division has requested an additional summer intern. And with the summer internship being before, we're going to come back to you for adoption of a budget, we thought that was important to include today. And it should also be noted, for the road fund, while we have somewhat corrected the deficit for the next two-year budget, the surplus that you see in the report that was attached to your agenda packet shows that we have about a 260, $290,000 surplus in the next two years. That's about equal to the contribution from Waste Management that we receive on an annual basis that was really intended to go towards capital improvement, rehabilitation for the roads, based on the impacts that their trucks have on our streets. So while it appears to be a surplus, it's at this point not necessarily an operating surplus. And so there's still some work to do with that fund to make sure that we can continue funding our operations going forward. And so what we can do, I mean, we can continue to do that, but it might just reduce and result in reduced funds available for capital, for the capital piece. So also because the Public Works Engineering Fund, as we'll talk about in a little bit, has a deficit as well, this request is about $7,000 a year for the next two years, would actually need to be picked up by the general fund. So that is important to note for the intern. All right. So we're almost to the point where you can provide your input. We put a reminder here for the things that are not included in the budget, just to be very clear, that there are still a lot of decisions to be made with the projected surpluses that we have. And then overall, the next slide. So overall, the next slide kind of summarizes the pieces of the report that we're requesting your feedback and input on. And of course, any other feedback or input that we haven't requested. So really, we're looking at, you know, the elimination of a couple of funds and combining them with other funds to improve transparency and administrative efficiency. There are three funds listed here, but this is something that I'm looking at sort of on, you know, a bigger scale. Anytime that we're doing a lot of work reconciling and it's not really clear to us, to the public that there might be impacts on the general fund or another fund, we're really looking to consolidate those. Also reducing the number of funds reduces our audit costs. One of the things that we ran into last year is we had created a new fund for a performance bond. It's a temporary fund, but because the size of that bond, we ended up paying additional because we had to audit it and report it as a major fund. So that's why I'm kind of looking overall at how can we just make things a little bit more efficient and also reduce the time and the effort that my staff spends in reconciling and transferring and doing all of the things that we do. So there are three funds listed here. You know, one other that has come up is the hazardous materials fund. So really I'm looking at your direction, not just for these three funds, but for the concept overall. We're also looking for your input on the proposed supplemental requests that are before you tonight, that we just went over. And also our proposals to reduce or eliminate negative fund balances. So there are three funds listed here tonight where we've provided some, you know, potential ways to eliminate a negative fund balance. The road fund is one of them. That's related to mainly capital projects that are out there. There is a deficit if we move the funding for the capital projects that have already been approved. And we do have a general infrastructure rehab and replacement fund that has a sufficient balance that we could use to balance that. So there is a proposal tonight to, not to do this now, but we've included in the final budget request, if that is something that the council has appetite for. The two other funds, the Fire Impact Fee Fund has about $4.5 million outstanding in loans from the general fund that have been outstanding for many years. We're not receiving the revenue that we need to be able to pay that off. And so we are proposing to write off those loans. And for the Stormwater Maintenance Fund, it has historically been funded by a transfer from the revenues, the franchise fees that we receive from waste haulers. It's been set in the last two-year budget at about 300,000 a year. And we're looking to actually increase that to fund the gap. And there are sufficient funds available. We receive about a million a year from franchise fees from waste haulers. So, trying to see if I have my issues here. One thing that you might remember, it was before my time, but I know in 2017, when we brought the budget to you, at that point, you were also requested to approve some write-offs of loans where the general funded loan to like the planning fund or the Public Works Fund. The issue with some of these, we wrote off those loans, but it didn't really create a long-term solution. Because for the Public Works Engineering Fund, for example, not 100% of their time is billable to projects or billable to the types of things that we receive fees for, like transportation permits and those types of things. Those costs are typically borne by the general fund. And so if we don't actually come up with a long-term solution, then this will be an issue that's brought back to you all the time. So we have actually proposed to move that fund into the general fund to eliminate that long-term. And that is a similar story with some of the other items that you're seeing before you tonight for eliminating negative fund balances. So with that, that's my presentation. You have read the whole report. I will open it up to you for any questions or feedback that you'd like to provide.
All right. Why don't we start with questions? Hold the feedback till we have a common understanding of the questions. Councilmember Guerrero?
Just wanted to ask, an explanation of equipment lease. If you can please give me an explanation of what that is exactly.
It's essentially financing a piece of equipment. So if we are going to finance a fire engine, then we enter into a capital lease. It's not a lease where, like if you lease a car, you pay payments for a few years and then you give the car back. A capital lease is essentially financing the vehicle.
Okay.
So a couple of questions. First, on the technical one, in the green document, in the main staff report on the Measure E fund, the table that's contained there. So the table shows the target funding, which is the, I thought we adopted ranges, not just single numbers, but the guidelines from the Measure E funding policy. And then the other two are the already committed dollars or what are the?
The other two are the requests that were submitted for the Measure E fund. And these are, we'll bring back a separate Measure E report and also for the other tax measures. But this is basically the requests that had been approved by council in prior years that are proposed to continue being funded. So it's nothing that you haven't seen here before, but as far as a breakdown on what those are, I can certainly provide that, or we could even pull it up in our brand-new budget system.
Okay. When it comes back, I'd like to see the home, the home run's the only one that's over the allocation, but, which is counterintuitive because we, well, maybe it's just not intuitive either way, but the programmatic cost of the home run should be substantially low right now because we're just building the program. So there, the cost of the promise, the tuition waiver for community college students entering community college from high school, the cost of the savings account, the cost of the scholarships, all the other, all the other elements is minimal at the moment because we're still building the programs and the enrollment in them. So we, I mean, it would be, we were expecting to be making investments in the construction, in the creation of the program. So it wasn't that we were going to spend anything, but I'm curious as to how we're already over in those places. And also then to understand, are we, are we making, I want to be sure, partly because I want to be sure that we're not creating ongoing costs, that when it is, as we do grow the number of students that are being served and every single high school is, high school students going on to community college or apprenticeship or something, and every single five-year-old entering kindergarten has a savings account, all the, the meat of the program is never compromised by the fact that we've built an, you know, ongoing administrative cost at the beginning. Because today should just be about building data systems and doing the outreach and the recruitment and some of the other mechanics. And it seems, it seems high.
Yeah, I do know that in the midterm, we did request that we could set aside, you know, some of the funds that weren't used and be able to use those in future years. I know when I looked at these, it didn't look like there was anything out of the ordinary, but I will bring back that detail because I don't, I don't have it for you tonight, unless we have access to pull it up.
Yeah, that's okay. And the only thing I would suggest is that, and I think which is helpful for us, but also for others reading this document, is that the road rehab and bike pad, trail safety items, rather than showing them as empty, they, you know, they should say pending or some, you know, because we are going to be spending, it's not as though we've made a decision, we're spending nothing in two, in two of the most high-profile areas. So this is, we have not yet identified.
Absolutely. That's more CIP funding. And so that is a piece that would be brought back in the next round. But absolutely, yes, we can do that.
And then, then that kind of leads to the questions around the process a little bit. And that's why you're bringing all the capital improvement projects to one and identifying the fund it's coming from so that it's kind of, we have that visibility on it. That may not be here in the Measure E budget, at least not yet. We can kind of see where it stands.
Absolutely. Also, if there are multiple funding sources and funds are transferring in, it gets a little...
That's always been the, kind of the hard part about looking at that. And yeah, so I want to make sure I was understanding the concept because I would make it more clear, as long as we identify in the general one what funds it's coming from, because then the danger would be you lose track of what's actually...
Absolutely.
...in the fund. So, okay. Two other flags I wanted to ask you about, and they both deal with ballot measures. So the first is Measure K. And I mean, the question, the question I ask isn't really what the hell were you thinking, but it kind of is that. Because the, I mean, Measure K, the justification in the decision package or whatever that Denex or his folks wrote up, you know, made, you know, made the sad case that the amount of money devoted to road maintenance wasn't as high as the maximum that the council had authorized back in 2002 or 2004. But that was driven by the fact that the amount of money we were spending on Public Works for the water subsidy was so much higher than we had budgeted in the first place. It wasn't, it wasn't that that program was underfunded, was somehow cheated out of its funds by fate. It was over, it was crowded out by the amount of money in the water subsidy that ultimately we moved away from a decade later. But the, but the Measure K, in some sense, I guess my real question for this and the Measure G one, I want to ask you about in a second, is, is how can, how can we do a better job of creating the right systems and message inside the organization to not think of the ballot measure funds as grants to exploit or backstops for the general fund? Grants to exploit, I don't mean in a bad way, but when, you know, when we get a grant from the, from the state or from the federal government, like, well, what can we charge against that grant so we can save the general fund? And that is a very smart strategy for dealing with restricted funds that come from external agencies. But these aren't restricted funds from external agencies. They're restricted funds from our, from the people of the community. And so the fact that the word road is in Measure K is not justification for road maintenance because also the commitment under Measure J and K, as was the commitment in UNV and the measure, in each of the measures since, has been a supplement and not supplant. And so the, there's, it was to fund road rehab projects, period. That was, that was, that provision of Measure J and K, not maintenance and not supplanting the general fund. So I'm, I'm just trying to, and I know, I know everyone knows that. I'm just trying, I'm trying to, how can we, because the second one, so only to mark that Measure K may not be an anomaly in this case, is the Measure G piece. We, a couple of years ago, we, our, our now city manager made the case that, you know, because the budget was super tight and the general fund was, was in jeopardy that, and we have this problem with the Community Development Fund, as you describe also, which is, you know, that we have a team of staff in the Community Development Department and we don't hire, we don't go out on the freeway off-ramp and hiring fire people every day based on applications that are coming in. So it will sometimes be the case that we have more planners and engineers than we need for the work, for the work that, or for the work that's being paid by developers or applicants. And sometimes we won't have enough. That's just, that's, that's the fact of life. So the proposal back then was because of the constraint, highly constrained general fund, could we, would the council agree to using Measure G as a backstop at that moment for that, for that instant problem? Because it was at its, the problem was at its peak because development was at its lowest at that point. And the council said, yes, begrudgingly. I think, I haven't looked at the tape, but knowing how, knowing the one who led the Measure G campaign and myself, I'm, I'm pretty sure we raised, you know, some, some flags about that proposal and, but agreed to it because the situation was so dire fiscally. And it appears that this proposal would, would make that permanent and unconstrained so that whatever the deficit in the Community Development Planning Fund is in any particular year, it would then get moved, it would get charged in the Measure G fund. And so that's the same problem. That's not, Measure G had a very specific purpose to say to the, it was asking the community, do you want to continue to make investments in new community improvement projects? And that were, that were essentially continuing forward the progress that we had been making under the redevelopment agency. And so the, again, with a, you know, not supplanting the base, the basic services of the city. So I, you know, I had a conversation with the city manager earlier today and, you know, expressed my feelings about both of these issues. On the Measure G one, I mean, I get the, I get the need to have done it then and perhaps the propriety of doing it now. I don't, what I couldn't, what I, what I'm, what I'm not comfortable with is putting it on autopilot because spending Measure D funds for, for general community development fund backstop, that's not specifically related to a Measure G project. That is not consistent with Measure G. And if we're going to do it because it's an emergency, then we should be doing that because it's an emergency and that the council should be making that decision and be called to account for it. But it can't just be something that's invisible inside the organization and that just automatically happens and then there's, we have no control or accountability and the public has no accountability over us to have properly managed it. So I think, for me at least, that would, you know, that, that, putting the Measure G piece as a policy question before... G piece as a policy question before a year at a time, this year is one of those questions is appropriate, but the autopilot approach, I think I would struggle with. And then the Measure K piece, I, that, to me, that's a fundamental problem with the, that doesn't, that does not line up with the, with what's appropriate in Measure K. And I just want to, since all the department heads are here, or most of them are here, just to reemphasize, because, that's now the number-one thing I look for in every budget, is where are the ballot, where are the ballot measures, and how are we making sure that we're protecting the integrity of them? Because we barely won Measure N for a lot of reasons, but it's just a reminder that the public's confidence in our integrity to do exactly what we said we were going to do is, is absolutely, it's more important than any $50,000 here or there, that, that confidence in our integrity is absolutely critical. And I know, I know everybody in City Hall gets that, but, so, it's important that we protect that in the way that we, that we budget.
If I may just, yeah, and I was going to go at this a little differently, but get to the same end. You just cut to the chase. But, so, if I read the report right, Roberta, the two things seem to be right. I mean, like, like I was going to applaud first before I brought the bat out. So, on, if I read it right, homeless coordinator is now part of the general fund. So, we had approved that to be funded by E, I believe, for a year, I think, or two, because the grant ran out. Is that right? It was a year?
I believe you put it on the midterm.
It was, it was approved for a period of time with, I believe, the expiration of some grant funds. We asked you to extend it during the midterm for one more year when we looked for additional long-term funding. Yes, from E.
But we, we kind of put the hook on it, like, in, as much as we love Mark and all the work that's being done, it's just, we just said that we, it's not the supplant, not the supplanting funding source, it's the supplement. So, and it, so this year, with where we are, we are going to move it in, that's kind of what we were, at least I anticipated a few years ago when we passed and did budget policy on E, is that if we're going to do this, then we have a temporary home for it, but we got to find a permanent home for it. And we did, so kudos to staff. Same with N. And I was kind of curious how you, how to be treated, how, how we treat it. And that is, we transferred in money from N and not just kind of decked N against the kind of current status. So, in other words, the, the fund will look like Measure E now as it's allocating a portion of the current MOU with POA, right? So, it's kind of decked against it, and they'll expire, and then we'll, we'll figure out what's next, wherever it goes. And that's the Measure N's policy part that Mayor Portem, Orozco and I need to kind of get to. But that's kind of, again, it's the right thing. And then, I got the K before I got the G, was the one I was curious about, was, because it just, it just seemed like we slid somebody over because it's a road fund issue, and we didn't, and the case being made was, we just didn't have anywhere else to put it, it seemed to be. So, again, there was a bit of, and so, part of my process question was around how we approach these, these issues. And, and part of it is, we're, we're in the process, are we doing that kind of value assessment of kind of where, where, I mean, because at some point, it's just, we, these expenses and people, and they're all important, and not, none of this is about specific people. But we got to find ways to fund them without kind of drawing into these lines of where we said dollars would be spent and how they would be spent. And, and if we can't avoid E or N or K or whatever the case, I mean, I need to, personally, I need to see, well, what tasks do we take to try to get there? Whether other value, and I keep going back to the example from Tracy's predecessor, when they, you know, there was elimination of a swim hour at the rec center, cut costs, they were able to fund someone else for a certain amount of time by cutting that one down. And that's, so, maybe you can explain to me, is there any type of that exercise as part of the budget process? That may, that may have, do we go through that sort of exercise before we made the decision to come to us and say, there's no other way to do this but this?
Sure. I can tell you what the hell I was thinking. So, both of those.
Yeah, I told you.
So, for, and my initial thought for the planning division fund was actually to move it into the general fund. I went back and saw, I didn't watch the video for, for matters of time, I read the report, and I misunderstood. It, it looked like we got authority to, to move the planners themselves into that fund, and so I was looking at, okay, we didn't do that, and so now is perhaps our opportunity so that we could, we could fix that. But, but in most cities, that is a function of the general fund, and then the revenues that come in from the work that they do that is billable, that comes in to offset, you know, the, the general tax revenues of the general fund. So, so that was my initial thought, and I had misunderstood the, the action that was taken in 2017. So, so that's on me. The Measure K, again, that is one where we looked at a lot of other ways to balance the road fund, we're still looking at ways to balance it. But the unfortunate reality is that we, our gas tax revenues are going down, we have a lot of capital needs, they're competing for the operational needs in the Measure K fund. And so, because we weren't quite to a balance, we're sort of balanced, but going forward, this is going to continue to be an issue. And the fact that there are some road maintenance workers being funded out of Measure K, my assumption now is perhaps that was additional road maintenance workers, I thought that was an opportunity to potentially move it over. The reason I didn't look at general fund to begin with is, is it seemed, I guess, odd for, for one way of putting it, to just move one, you know, position to the general fund. But, but that is another area where, you know, gas tax revenues come in to help support the road maintenance function. It is expected that general fund dollars would be spent on some of that. We have a maintenance of effort requirement to be able to spend RSB-1 monies, and so for spending general fund and other sort of general dollars on road maintenance, and so that was the reason for doing that. As you see in the report, there is currently general fund money available if we'd like to go ahead and make those moves to the general fund, which makes a lot of sense. And we have the ability to do it now to solve some of those problems. It will reduce the amount of general fund available when we bring back the rest of the budget to you, but it's absolutely appropriate and available at the moment to do so. So.
Could I offer a little bit more on that? Because I was there. I was there.
You were at that.
So, let's take one issue at a time. So, the planners, plan division 106 issue, the reality is, we have a structural deficit the way we've been doing it. And so, two years ago, a lot of what was said is, was the motivation for fixing it. The planners do work on community investment-type projects, that's not all they do. So, so full acknowledgement on that. So, it does call into question, is the 106 fund the appropriate place to make them home? So, I think, as Roberta was saying, there's another way we can do it, which I think is to put them, put the fund into the general fund, and they track their time. So, so there's a way to have the 106 fund go into that fund when it's appropriate, just like they do with planning charges, so there would still be that reimbursement. So, that's something we can definitely set up. Now, the road fund, there is another solution besides the general fund that Roberta and I talked about, which would be just simply to keep that position in the road fund, but also acknowledgement that there is a, there is a capital need on the roadside as well, and that's a separate discussion, that the Measure K discussion, as we look at Measure K allocations and the, and the amount of available revenue there, maybe it's more appropriate to have that in the context of capital needs versus positions, based on what I'm hearing. So, we could, we could keep that position in the road fund as a, as a way to move this forward.
It still solves it for a period of time, but that, but that's something that we need to continue to work on, looking at a long-term solution for, for that as well.
I, I think that, that approach makes sense. I mean, that, I mean, the older the revenue sources, the more, the more money there is in it than was anticipated when it was adopted, because we have been growing. So, there's more in Measure K than was programmed in those areas. But the, the extent to which we were making investments that aren't necessarily core, that the, those core functions of the city, which it turns out homeless coordinator is, which is why it's absolutely appropriate, more appropriate for, to be in the general fund than for it to be in Measure E anyway, because it is, it is one of those, it is, it is as essential as, as most of the other things that we're, that we're doing. And most of these measures all had supplemental purposes to them. But J and K together, you know, they had, it had road rehabilitation and repair as a capital item, but that was, that was the portion that then sunsetted and transitioned over to UNV, right?
The capital portion of J went away, but there was still a target level on K for road rehab that I think contemplated capital, but.
They're the same one.
It was, it was a half, so it was a half a cent, a quarter cent. It was purely capital, went away.
Yeah.
And then it left K as the other quarter cent.
Well, K was both, both halves.
Correct.
J was advisory to K.
Right. So, I'm sorry, the one quarter for capital that was specifically designated for capital went away.
Yeah. Yeah. So, they, but the, but the capital, the capital for road rehab was in J, in the J instructions essentially for K. And in the, and in, both in the, in the, the measure described that, the measure itself didn't, you know, the advisory measure didn't go through this quarter's capital and this quarter's for whatever. That was in the resolution that was adopted. But for, just from my perspective, you know, having jointly authored that with Council Member Kristoff, the extent to which we're making investments in those, in those buckets, you know, the, the specific percentages, you know, as long as we're meeting the, those allocations from back then, if there's, if there, if we have additional revenues, which we do, in those, in that fund, spending them on those originally authorized purposes, even potentially some that were on the capital side, I would have a lot less heartburn on. But buying out something that is, you know, maintenance of the road is, is an essential, it's, that's not a, that is a supplant, that's a supplanting function, and that doesn't belong in, in those issues. So, that could, your solution could, could be, could one way to swap that, to spend more, spend some K money on road rehab that the road fund might have otherwise funded, and spend the road fund money that doesn't exist on the maintenance worker.
Yes. Okay.
I do have one more question. Regarding the question of to use Measure E for backfilling for the preschool, I was, and also in the West Sacramento home run, we do have some state budget issues that are looking promising that will get funded, and I'd like to take into consideration, those will be done probably mid-June, I don't know, overlapping the time. Looking at the trailer bill language for components of the West Sacramento home run, projects like ours would be up first for approval because we have implemented them already, and it looks like we have some of the implementation requirements fulfilled. And I think that we have a good chance of being able to draw down some of that funding here in West Sacramento, given that it's been used as a model, and that's probably why the trailer bill language is crafted that way. So, that might help alleviate some of what we are spending here. I don't know if you can, I don't want to back it up, but what can we do to address that expenditure by using state budget funding?
Sure. We could look at the, this particular supplemental is looking at funding, at funding a gap for our actual operation of the preschools. However, I know that there's also Measure E money that has been dedicated towards the Up for West Act, the quality preschool, and other pieces that perhaps we can make a shift if we're, if we're able to get some of that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
State money.
Well, and on that note, may I? That was one of the flags that I had. I mean, along the steamlines of the conversation, Measure E being dedicated not to, to supplant any existing program. And as much as I'm in favor of our preschool program in the city, like, one of the biggest champions, I'd say, I also felt a little bit of heartburn looking at Measure E funds using to supplant, because I wanted it to be more for seed money for bigger ideas, new things that we promised our community as opposed to existing programs.
We have one-time general fund money that could also be used. This is a one-time thing for now until we come back and have a bigger conversation, so that's also available.
And just one nuance, Councilmember Sandy on this one, because Measure E, the, two of the principal original motivations of Measure E were our, our road rehab deficit and our preschool deficit. So, this was actually, the actual construction of road repair and the rescuing of preschool, which was, we were about to lose all the funding for, was, was one of the motivators for putting Measure E on the ballot. So, it's, it's one where the supplement supplant issue is, is a tougher one, because it was about to, bankrupt's not the right word, but we were about to be at a point where there was no money for it at all. So, it's a little, it was just why the number's so big, too. It's, you know, it's, I forget what the target number is, five, $600,000? Yeah. So, it's large because it was including a significant amount of money that we used to receive from the, from the first five. Yeah. Councilmember Sandy?
I appreciated the characterization of having the opportunity for a fresh look for the budget, and I feel that the discussion is, is really fruitful for us to try to grapple with some of the, and you're bringing them to light, the structural deficit issues that we, we need to figure out. So, I, I also was expecting, and the mayor came through, that he would be focusing on the fund issue since I've been through this discussion a few times. So, I do think having, having us all in alignment with clarity about, about, about how we're going to address these issues. I don't know that I, I wish, I wish I could come with a barrel full of solutions, but I know that we need to tackle these. So, I really appreciate everything you've done to do the reconciliation, to try to make things whole, to, to add clarity and to simplify things. I think that was also a motivation, as you mentioned, with the audit costs, just to, just to be thinking a little differently. So, I really appreciate that. Again, I don't know that I have, have all the direction to provide, but, but I appreciate hearing my colleagues, too, and some of, some of the concerns that they, they've brought up tonight.
Well, feedback on what you don't support is just as important or even more than what you do or bringing solutions, so I appreciate that.
If I, if I can, Mr. Murray. Thank you. Roberta, I know we just went right to the issue, but you've done a really terrific job of sort of gathering this information and really simplifying it. And I appreciate the approach you've taken here, kind of bringing it out to an O and M budget, then the next steps kind of make sense. So, I applaud you. I know we met a year ago or over a year ago, first time, and delved into some key issues. I know you've been working super hard on this, and it shows. And thanks to everybody else that's kind of digging in to this as well, because it is, to me, it made a lot more sense reading through it, and I had this couple of clarifying questions, which you've answered today. But from a process standpoint, it makes a lot of sense, and I'm glad that hopefully staff was able to kind of get through it a little easier and kind of understood the process. But this is, this is terrific process, and this is kind of the simplified way you kind of laid it out, the status quo budget, where are we? I just had that one remark about how you capture, it's just, you don't have to answer it, it's just sort of how you might capture in the future years, any, the, any, I don't want to say any cutting the services or costs or efficiencies, how do you capture those as, as ways we were able to save that allow the growth of something else? I think that would be kind of the next evolution that you might build into it, because we're not seeing that all the time. And I know I hear about staff doing things, but even simplifying the budgeting process might be a way to bring more efficiency. So, but the way you've been able to gather information, refine it, and bring it to the simplified format is terrific. So, thank you.
If I may respond, thank you. One of the, it's a little unfortunate that the, the process was split this year, but it had to do with timing and the fact that I wanted to bring everything to you with all the information so you can make a good decisions. The way that I typically handle some of those things is kind of looking at, everything comes together at the same time, but looking at, okay, here's your, your status quo budget, anything that you want to change, and if that's efficiencies, if that's changing out contractors for staff or vice versa, or making changes, those come through on a decision package typically so that we can look at, okay, we want to actually make this change, this is going to reduce costs for the city, and so that would come as a separate item for you to look at that, that would be hopefully adopted at the same time of the budget. This was just a different year because of some of the other issues that we're dealing with, but typically I pull those out and have them identified on a separate item that would come before you at the same time you adopt the entire budget. So, but I also get what you're saying, we ought to look at a lot of that already within our, within our current O and M budget, where I think that in some, some cases, those were submitted on some of the, the things that you might be looking at a little bit later. So, but yes, very well noted.
And, and the staff may not be giving a full picture to you as they're making changes in there.
Absolutely.
Right? So, just giving you what the projected budget will be and not, as you're saying.
And I may include those.
Yeah. How do you, and, and make them visible to us, so we know that that's happening. So, thank you.
Just briefly, not to belabor the, I appreciate so much your efforts to try to make our budget more user-friendly to people in the community. I mean, I worked two years at the Office of Management and Budget, and I look at this sometimes, you know, the first glance at the budget, and I'm lost. It's taken a long time to kind of get a grasp of that, and so I can only imagine what that must look like, you know, to simplify this budget process for someone who doesn't have experience, and I appreciate that. You've taken that, you know, that task and have enthusiastically embraced it to, to make this process more transparent, so appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right. I always start with the hit and end with the, with the upside, because that's what we all leave with. So, I completely agree, the work here is outstanding, the, both you and the budget committee and the department heads, the city manager, I know, has played a, some, a bit of a role in this as well. as well. It's, it is really outstanding and it's much easier to, to follow and to, and to get to the heart of the issue. This is a, this is also easier because there's, we're not, we're not cutting 10%. So, you know, which will be the true test of any new budget system is when we have to make the really hard, painful decisions as well. So I, I, I hopefully we won't see that anytime soon, but it does, is, in terms of the forecast in particular, I just want to emphasize how important it is to, one, give it, for us to have more frequent information than just the, than just the annual budgets, but also some, some humility about our forecasts. I mean, we were here a year ago on the, you know, a, a month away from voting to put a ballot measure on the ballot because we couldn't afford to do some of the most basic things in the, in the city in terms of, you know, just, just one employee unit, because the fiscal situation of the city was so dire and the forecasts around, you know, so many trends were, were, were extremely challenging. And that was after the end of the, that was well after the end of the recession. And, you know, I've, I've been on the council more than a couple of years and the volatility in the, in the, in forecasts and actuals is enormous and it's only, it's only been getting bigger. And it's, doesn't track necessarily with the economy and now we're, you know, we're in, we're in a global and national economic and political climate where, you know, a tariff is announced in a day and, and everything changed, the market and prices all changed overnight that you couldn't have accounted for. And so it, it, it just demands a high level of humility around what those forecasts are and about how far we can peer into the future. And one of the hallmarks of this city, other than citric sites, this city uniquely in the region, has been it's, you know, it's careful, from the beginning, I think maybe because we were such a poor city in 1987, that from the very beginning, that council was insistent on, you know, squirreling away the appropriate amount of reserves, not making too many long-term commitments, not getting excited when an extra, you know, when sales tax revenues were up for one year, when our sales tax revenues can take big hits all at once. And, and that, that very fiscally prudent philosophy has served us extremely well in both good and bad times. And so in, as we're, as we are in a moment, whether it's the next five years or the next five minutes where revenues are up, I just want to counsel, as I say, humility and caution and, and exuber, and irrational exuberance about, you know, trying to return to 2008 in terms of staffing levels and compensation and all those other issues that, that is not, is, right at this moment, peering into one year of, of actual revenue and, and into better models of the future, but even the best model of a highly volatile reality is, it's just more precise at, at understanding the, the incredible range of possibilities out there that we just need to be, we need to be appropriately cautious as we're making long-term commitments. So. All right, you have sufficient feedback? All right. Very good. Thanks so much, Roberta. All right, council calendar, Mr. Laurel.
I'm going to do a really bad job at this.
Good luck.
Partner's not here.
We're all pulling for you.
Yeah. So it was already mentioned, the event on Friday, the Mental Health Art Show, it's going to be down here in the Galleria from 11 to 1. Couple other highlights here, the Habitat for Women's Build Day, the second round of it is on Saturday. Also on Saturday, the, the Youth Football Clinic at River City High School that's put on by the West Sac PD. And then looking ahead a bit, I'll, I'll just point out, May 23rd, there is a LAFCO hearing in the council chambers, but it's not on the proposals having to do with the Reclamation District in, in our city. It's actually, has to do with the one to the north of us. So if you're interested in that, that's happening on the 23rd. Public Works Barbecue, you are invited to that, that's also on the 23rd, it's on the calendar. And lastly, the Station 44 Open House is next Saturday at 11 o'clock. So that's the calendar. I don't have a report, so.
Okay. So city manager report, there's none. City attorney report, none. Staff direction for members of the council, we have no future agenda item requests. So Councilmember Sandin moves and then Councilmember Lesma seconds at the meeting. Be turned to all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, meeting is adjourned.